Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 20th, 2009, meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Draymond.
And tonight's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation as delivered by Pastor Charles Updike, Senior Pastor of the First Baptist Church of Glendale.
Let us pray. Holy and Almighty God, we rejoice in this day and the blessings of liberty for our country's peaceful transfer of power this day. We pray tonight for your blessing upon thy servant, our President Barack Obama. Guide and direct him and bless he and his family as they serve our country. We gratefully acknowledge that your presence and power are available to each one of us, and tonight we ask that your light and wisdom guide our mayor and our city council. Inspire them with thy truths and lead them to actions which help Glendale to be a place of stability, a place of civility, and a place where your children live in well-being. We know and are grateful that you work through faithful leaders to establish us in justice and mercy. Bring to this gathering tonight your spirit and work in our council to bring about responsible government for all your people in Glendale. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Updike. Appreciate that. And this is a special day for our country. Of course, all inauguration days are, but this one in particular. But perhaps we'll talk about that in a bit. Let me turn back to the City Clerk and ask for his report.
Mr. Mayor, the agenda for the January 20th, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 15th, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. Our next item?
Next item is presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m.'s Agenda Preview for the meeting of January 27th, 2009.
With that, I'll go to our Assistant to the City Manager, John Tuktalian.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of council. Next week's series of meetings will begin at 9:30 in the morning. The first will be an overview of the current budget, forecast, and schedule for discussion of the 2009-2010 budget. There are no items on the Housing Authority or the Redevelopment Agency agendas. There will be a joint Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority meeting. The first is the Directors of Planning, Community Development, and Housing regarding the City of Glendale housing element of the general plan. And the second is the Directors of Planning and Community Development and Housing regarding multifamily parking enforcement and options regarding excitement of parking spaces. City Council agenda has a number of consent items. Under adoption of ordinances, at 7:00 a.m. is an ordinance adopted as an urgency measure establishing a temporary moratorium under approval of specified permits for installation of commercial wireless facilities. Under action items, at 8:00 a.m. is a city manager regarding consideration of federal appropriation request for fiscal year 2010. At 8:00 b.m. is a city manager regarding the status of the federal economic stimulus package and submission of Glendale projects for potential funding. At 8:00 c.m. is a director of planning regarding proposed ordinance establishing cottage growth historic district overlay zone. And at 8:00 d.m. is a director of planning regarding the proposed ordinance establishing Ardi Even Highlands Historic District Overlay Zone. And under hearings, there is one item. 9:00 a.m. is a director of planning regarding the Glendale Register of Historic Resources listing of property at 418 West Kenneth Road.
Thank you, Mr. Tuktalian. I appreciate that. Before we move on to our next item, may I ask, is anyone here in the audience for the hearing that was scheduled at 9:00 a.m. on the agenda? Okay. Ms. Beers, if you'd like to explain about the rescheduling of this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that has been actually continued, and the ordinance will be continued to February 24th without any further public notice. There was a meeting that was held this afternoon, and there were a number of questions, and staff needs the time to go back and do some work. And we will be back on February 24th without any further notice.
I would like to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Before you do, the City Attorney has his hand up, and...
A couple of things, Mr. Mayor, members of council. That would be, let's read the item into the record first, under 9:00 a.m.
All right.
And let's make sure the record is clear that there was a study session in the form of a special meeting this afternoon where a lot of these issues were the subject of discussion, and we got to the point where, got valuable input from the City Council, but it necessitates staff going back, coming back to you with options so that the public hearing doesn't become meaningless, so the public then has a little more, has these options refined, the opportunity to review them and comment on them in a public hearing forum. So at this time, if it's the desire of the council to continue...
Mr. City Clerk, could you read the item, please, at 9:00 a.m.?
Mr. Mayor, certainly. At 9:00 a.m. is the Director of Planning's report continued from November 18th, 2008, regarding proposed ordinance amending Title 1, 2, and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code and the South Brand Boulevard specific plan relating generally to the codification of zoning code interpretations, miscellaneous revisions and minor cleanups, PZON 2008-005, and resolution establishing new fees associated with time extension requests. At A1 was an ordinance for introduction, and A2 would have been a resolution adopting new fees.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. All right. So with that, we need a motion to continue without further notice.
Until February 24th, 2009. Motion was made.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion before we vote? There's none? Mr. Kusakian?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. All right. Thank you for that housekeeping. All right. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Item number four on the agenda, City Council and Staff Comments.
I'd like to ask my colleagues to indulge me for a moment, and also the public as well, all of our constituents. This is a special day, and should you care to comment about the morning's activities and the bit of history that we lived through this morning? I would love to hear it now, if you might want to share it with the public. And I'm referring to the inauguration of a new president, actually.
We were waiting for you, our leader.
Oh, I will come last, but I was only going to say that, for my own comments, I thought it was an exceptionally moving moment to be able to witness. For me, as an individual that grew up sort of paying attention to national politics the way most of my contemporaries were interested in baseball stats, this is always interesting anyway and moving. The transfer of power within the United States where a president of another party and of opposing views actually participates in the installation of the new president is always amazing to me. But in particular this, because if you just saw the numbers of people who were on the National Mall, it was incredible to watch. Out of the inaugural speech, I brought these notes because these were the words that I thought were most interesting to me. The comment was, or the text was, "Our challenges," meaning all of us as Americans, "our challenges may be new. The instruments with which we meet them may be new. But those values on which our success depends, hard work and honesty, courage and fair play, tolerance and curiosity, loyalty and patriotism, these things are old. These things are true. They have been the quiet force of progress throughout our history." As we have an election cycle coming up, and for future election cycles, I wish for all of us that we, incumbents and challengers alike, keep that in mind as well for our own constituents. And those are my only comments. I would certainly encourage my colleagues to share their views. Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're absolutely correct. It was a very moving inauguration to see over 2 million people at the mall just standing there and waving the flags and listening to our new incoming president. And after it was all said and done, they dispersed quietly. There was no major issues. It says a lot about this country. 2 million people. I have been in that mall. I have walked that mall. That is a huge area. It takes a long time to walk from one end to the other. And he talked about how many of our citizens are ready for a different direction. I took a couple of lines out of our new president, and the line that I took more than anything else, considering that I come from another country. And I can guarantee you almost everybody in the world was watching, especially the leaders of other countries, and some who are not very friendly to us. I thought the line that he used, which is, "If your hand is clenched and you have a fist, there will always be a hand out there to grab your hand if you let your fist go," which basically spoke volumes, saying to those countries that see us as the devil or the evil empire, which is we're not. We will meet you halfway so long as you do away with your awful ways. Let's work together. There is an extension of a hand. So there is an opening for all of those countries who did not have a good relationship with this country, an opportunity for them to move forward and work together. And I thought that was a huge gesture on his part and a part of this country. So I was very much moved. As I told my wife, whoever wrote that speech for him could write my statements, valid statement, because he was a fantastic speech. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Yusefian. Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. Barry was a regular guy. I call him Barry because that's what he wanted to be called at Occidental College when we took several classes together. He was not the flamboyant orator that you hear today, that you heard at the inauguration speech or during the campaign. He was a regular guy, very thoughtful, fun to be around. I perhaps was in the audience at his first political speech at the quad at Occidental College when he spoke out against apartheid and urging the Board of Trustees of Occidental College to divest any investments involving South African companies, companies that did business with South Africa. Much of the time, he went walking around campus in flip-flops and OP shorts, a tee-shirt. He had a good-sized Afro. Wasn't too bad on the basketball court. Occidental is a small school. There were only about 1,400 students total, because I was coming in as a junior transferring from a school back east, Bucknell University, and he was a sophomore. I had to pick up a lot of the required classes that Occidental had. And Occidental has a very good program as a liberal arts school in giving the students a broad view of society and the world. And in those classes, which I enjoyed, I'm sure Barry enjoyed them as well, and he excelled in them. And I think that's part of what gives him the appreciation for the different cultures throughout the world, which makes him such a well-liked/loved leader. I think the whole world has hope. I'm very proud to have been a classmate of his. I'm very proud to have attended Occidental College with him. And in case he's watching, this is probably how he would best remember me, walking around campus. And if that ambassadorship to the Bahamas is open, I'm still ready for it. So good luck to our new president and to the entire country. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Najarian. And I never thought, as a former sage hen from Mona College, I'd be sitting next to anyone in elected office wearing an Occidental Letterman's jacket. I thought those days I would never see again. Okay. Councilmember Quintero?
It is truly a historic day and a historic inauguration. And for someone who grew up in the South in the '50s and '60s, I guess it's even more, in a sense, surprising how far this country's come. And it's also a time, as the new president keeps talking about, I mean, this is basically the worst economic crisis since the 1930s. We've got two wars in two different countries and literally in two different continents. So we all have to work together, both here in the city of Glendale at a local level and the state, and at the national level. We have to pull together as a country and forget politics for the next few years as we work our way out of this economic cycle and hopefully accomplish some of the goals in Iraq and Afghanistan. And I'd also say specifically here in the city of Glendale, there's certainly lots that people can do. You don't always have to think in terms of national or international ideas. You can just think about local things, things that you can do with nonprofits, help here at the city of Glendale. Plenty of volunteer possibilities are available. So I hope we all look on this as the turning of a new chapter, this inauguration and this administration, the turning of a new chapter, and we'll all work together and solve our problems. They're certainly not insurmountable. It's just going to take some hard work and dedication and some discipline, but we can certainly do it. The United States has done far more in its history. So anyway, it's a very proud day for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Weaver?
Taking a slightly different approach to what I observed, other than a great speech and what I pray is a great president to be. But the first president that I remember was Harry S. Truman. Those days, there were no TV, and the coverage on TV is so spectacular now. You intimately know everything that is happening or has happened in the last week. You couldn't turn around without a television camera being there to record it. And they did say that he spent last weekend, Saturday and Sunday, working on his speech. He devoted two days to it, and he was exchanging with his writers back and forth, but for the most part, that was his speech. Somebody said that, "When will it hit him that he's the president?" Because he's going to, I think, six balls tonight. And one former president said, "When he goes into the Oval Office and sits down in the chair, it will hit him." All the responsibilities of the free world resting on his shoulders. Found remarkable, watching all the coverage, that a house of 55,000 square feet of living space, that one president and all his belongings are removed, and all the rest, including painting, and everything done in the White House is done in five to six hours. Remarkable. Can conceive of any of us moving out of our house in two days.
Clearly, he was not getting his permits in the city of Glendale.
That's true. That's a good point, that they painted it and everything. And then to Vice President Shaney, moving his own boxes and pulls a muscle in his back, ends up in a wheelchair. Thing I found, the thing I found kind of interesting, as I look at it differently, is I kept watching what was going on around the president, namely the Secret Service. You see a few shots of the Secret Service when they were talking to each other, and they'd be smiling when they were talking. You know, they didn't think the cameras were on. But around the president, whether they were in front or back, just stern-faced the entire time. And I felt a great deal of compassion for the Secret Service when this president decided to go out into the crowd and shake hands with people that were there, walk three blocks in the parade. I can just imagine what must have been going through the heads of the Secret Service that are trying to protect him. They must be very happy the day is almost over. The other thing that I observed is it's just totally amazing how the transition of power in this country can happen so seamlessly. Last shot you see is former president in the former Air Force One taking off into the clouds. Just like that, in hours' time, was the president, and he's gone, and he's on a plane back in Texas right now relaxing. It's just, it's unconceivable. That'll never happen on a Glendale City Council.
You mean, when you leave office, Mr. Weaver?
Anybody else leaves office.
You just ascend into the clouds?
There'll be bitterness, and there'll be all that stuff.
We don't own an Air Force One.
Yeah, we're lucky to get on our own cars. And the last thing I'd like to say, with the millions there and the millions we know watched on TV, billions of people probably worldwide, common thing, I think, that everyone was thinking to themselves, it's hope and faith in the future, that this president can somehow miraculously solve some of the major problems facing this world of ours, whether it's foreign or domestic. A lot of people out there, you can just read their faces. We have faith in you, and we hope and believe you're going to make it happen. I sincerely hope that we all pray that he does do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. And I know that, I want to expand this discussion also to our staff. And our City Clerk has some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just want to say a few words, and I'd start off by saying, probably as the youngest person that sits up here, I was not old enough to remember broadcasts about the Vietnam War as they were being reported to our nation or the demonstrations against it. I wasn't even a toddler during the Watergate scandal. And Walter Cronkite's reassuring voice reporting the evening news is the faintest of memory from my childhood. But I do remember where I was when the Berlin Wall came down. I was here in Glendale, glued to the television set after one after another, communist countries in the Eastern Bloc decided to seek freedom rather than communism and totalitarianism. And this was not an exception as far as historic moments in my lifetime, and certainly is a moment that defines our nation's history and future, and I think many people will remember where they were. However, I will never forget where I was, because as much as I had planned to be in front of the television set or near a radio, I was at our counter in the City Clerk's office distributing nomination papers to two candidates who are seeking office, prospective candidates seeking office in the upcoming, forthcoming city municipal elections. I wanted to drag them into my office so we could listen to the inauguration together on the computer or on the radio, but I kind of have thought of a more appropriate place to be in advising or explaining the elections code and what these candidates, prospective candidates, had to do to participate in the elections, because after all, elections and the power of the individual voter are what made this day possible. It was a testament to the most enduring of American traditions, and that is the power of individual vote to elect our representatives and our president. And I wish President Barack Obama and his family much success as he leads our nation in the coming years.
Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment before we move on? No? All right. Thank you all. Mr. Kusakian, I believe we are at item four.
Item five on consent items?
I think no, we're at item four, actually.
City Council and Staff Comments.
There may be other comments other than the inauguration that they want to cover. Mr. Weaver, anything? Mr. Quintero? Mr. Najarian?
Yes, just briefly, Mr. Mayor and management staff, we're going to be getting a letter shortly from the MTA indicating that the Measure R funds are going to start to be flowing to us in the fall. Measure R is the half-cent sales tax increase, which was approved by the voters by about 67 percent. And we, meaning the local municipalities, Glendale included, are going to be receiving 15 percent of the return of those funds as a local return. It can be used for signal synchronization, street resurfacing, pothole repair, left-turn signals, bikeways, pedestrian improvements, streetscapes, transit, and we will have the complete discretion as to how to spend those funds. In light of our upcoming budgetary discussions and our adoption of a budget in a month or so, the Director, the CEO, will be letting us know exactly what we can expect to begin our budgeting process. So there's a little bit of good news on the financial side. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of items. First of all, we all received notice that our former city manager, Jim Rez, who was our representative to DWP, I mean Metropolitan, MWP, Metropolitan Water District, sent his letter of resignation after 20 years of diligent service. I don't think we mentioned this to the public, but during the holiday season, Mr. Rez lost his wife. And he felt that after 20 years, time has come for someone else to take the baton and move it forward. And I want to say thank you, Jim, for your great work when you were city manager and also when you were our representative. The second item is, last week, I had a little forum, which was a town hall meeting, and a person at the town hall asked a question, which was given to me in writing, and had to do with homeless on the streets. I promised him I will get an answer from our city attorney. Question was, do we deal with all of our citizens equally? Why aren't we allowing people who have no homes to be able to sleep on the streets? Because we do have an ordinance that says no camping on the streets. So, Mr. Howard, do you have an answer for that question?
I do. Mr. Mayor, members of council, number one, the city has a number of programs that are addressed to reaching out to the homeless to get them off the streets. But number two, the no camping ordinance that we have was patterned after a California Supreme Court case, TOBE versus City of Santa Ana, where the court found that you're not discriminating against the homeless, where you prohibit camping in your public streets or ways. It applies across the board to all members of society, regardless of whether, regardless of their status. So it is not a form of discrimination.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Couple items I have. One is related to, as many of my colleagues know, we received notice and some input also from the public related to the Allstate Insurance Study related to where Glendale ranks with regard to pedestrian safety and so on. And we are, I think, one removed from the bottom of the list, not very good stats. Last week, I spent a couple of hours, actually, with our traffic division over at the Police Department to hear how they're working, what they're doing, and what their needs may be. I raised the issue because I would like to encourage all of us to start a process here. I'd like to encourage my colleagues to join me in some kind of consensus to put this on the agenda and see what our program is going to be, other than just say, "We have a problem. It'll get solved." I think we do need to begin the process of talking about it. This is not new. It will be something, I'm sure, that will take time and will certainly lapse out of my term as mayor. as mayor, but still I think we should put it on the agenda for as soon as we can and get some discussion on it as soon as we can. Bring in the appropriate department heads that can bring us the statistical data and bring the police department into this to determine what we are doing, what we can be doing better. Gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I concur with that. I would like, with your permission, to agendize that item. I think that's very important. Also, I would ask Mr. Zern to also share with all of my colleagues the results of the red camera photo, the red light camera survey. I did get the six months version and it shows a reduction in the tickets, which shows people are actually stopping at the red light instead of crossing it. So, I think, I think that's a good idea.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the best way is for me to provide each of you the same document that we gave Mr. Yusefian so you actually see the numbers. But as he said, there has been a reduction since.
All right, very good. Then we will do that. If we can make a note about it, Mr. Pierce.
In that, and I support that idea, but including in that the component of fines and harsher penalties that we can, that we may be able to impose as a city.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about all the options, including, including fines. Mr. Weaver?
I was going to say, for years I've sat here and talked about stiffer fines, et cetera, and I keep getting told the state supersedes our ability to use so many things. So, I'd love to hear what's happened new in the last 12 years I don't know about. We all know about the traffic speeding, whatever, and pedestrian accidents occurring, but I'd love to hear what's new that we can do to stop it or lower it.
All right, well, that's what, that's what the public, public hearing will have, will relate to, not just fines, but other issues as well. There are many, I suspect. Mr. Quintero, anything before we? Okay. All right, the other issue, another, there are two others actually. One is, I'd also like to similarly schedule some public outreach between our staff and the public living in and around the San Fernando Corridor where the construction is going on and all the myriad levels, the punch-through, the at-grade crossing, the flyover. I don't know about the rest of you gentlemen, but I'm getting emails more or less constantly from residents who are basically sending the message, "Gentlemen, we need a break." You know, we just, it's like living in a war zone. Now, I'm not saying that some of that, our explanation's for some of it. I'm not telling you I agree necessarily with all of that, I don't know. But I do know this, we at least owe our residents more hand-holding, I think, than they're getting right now. And if, if some of the questions can be answered with some public meetings in the neighborhood so we can find out from the resident's standpoint what they're dealing with and what we can help do about it to facilitate some ease of that, I'd like to schedule it if we can. Yes, sir.
To piggyback on that specific point, I had given some information to management staff about the quiet zone, the application for the quiet zone.
And that's one of the aspects, certainly, Mr. Najarian.
Let's not leave that out.
Okay, and then lastly, I'm going to test your, your memory, Mr. City Attorney. You may recall there were some emails that went back and forth about residents who, a resident who was having some issues related to solar panels and questions related to the limits of city jurisdiction versus state statutes and so on. I'd like to know if you can bring back an update on that for us as to where that all went?
We can, and it's really more in the lap of Policy and Planning Department. Our office has given an opinion to the Planning Department about the limits of our jurisdiction and the like, and I know that specific case to which you're referring, the gentleman came in with some very nice drawings of a potential solar panel construction over a patio area that might have violated height limit and setback. And we have determined that, in fact, we are not preempted by state law, so it becomes a policy issue for the city council to consider.
All right. I, do you have any idea of?
We'll have to check tomorrow at executive staff meeting because I believe the planning does have that on their, their work program.
Okay.
I'll have to check and confirm. Yes, sir.
Does the party, the homeowner involved, know what the status of this is? Because they, they did email me or the family emailed me and, and were basically saying, "Where did this go?"
If they're emailing you indicating they don't know where it goes, my guess is that they're not aware, they may not be aware of it.
It's my way of saying, Mr. Howard, can we please contact them and let them know as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I thank you, and I don't have any other comments. Are there any, is there any other input from staff? All right, I hear none. Mr. Kosakian, can you move to the next item, please?
Five is consent items, including minutes, the following are a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Weaver?
Will the consent count here at five?
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. I have no speaker cards. Mr. Kosakian, if you would, please.
Council members, Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. All right, our next item, please.
Next item would be oral communications.
Thank you, Mr. Kosakian. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, our policy is to take oral communications at the end of the agendized items, with the exception of those speakers who would like to voluntarily limit their time to three minutes for the purpose of, and making public announcements about public events, special events. Our first speaker is Gabrielle O'Sullivan, followed by Leon Mayer.
My name is Gabrielle O'Sullivan and I'm here to make representations on behalf of Luna Playhouse. As you may know, we have been operating for three and a half years at our own expense at Luna Playhouse. And we would like the Playhouse to continue, but we do need financial aid from the council. It's been said that the quality of a society is judged by the provision it makes for its core and the attention and sophistication of its art and culture.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I have to interrupt. Is this for the agenda item or is it an announcement for an event or play at the Playhouse?
Oral communication.
Well, this is strictly for announcements of?
I'm sorry, the impression I was under it was for a play announcement at the Playhouse. We'll be getting to that item.
Yes, there will be oral communications. If I may, let me give the card back to the city clerk and we will call you up when we get to that portion. Leon Mayer, please.
Evening, Mayor Drayman, members of the council staff. My name is Leon Mayer and I'm a member of a voluntary organization called the Friends at the Library, and we're one of many voluntary organizations in Glendale that are literally the spirit of America from the standpoint of voluntary activities productive to the society they live, people live in. As a member of the Friends at the Library, I'm chairman of the author Artists and Friends series, and we're having an event that I talked about around six times before this Thursday. This is the last invitation. There's still seats available, not many. We expect a crowded, a good crowd. And this event is special because the Center for Armenian Remembrance and the Temple Sania of Glendale are cosponsoring this event, of course, along with the Friends, to honor the memories of Ralph Lemkin and Bahan Kardashian. These are two giants of the last century who took part in human rights and the battle for justice for Armenia and the battle for the recognition of the United Nations for genocide and the Holocaust. That's Thursday at seven o'clock at the library. Parking will be validated. Now, I still have some flyers as I leave. If somebody is still interested, raise your hand, I'll give you a flyer. Now, on February 26th, February 22nd, rather, we don't have the flyers yet, Ed Begley, who was supposed to be here several weeks ago, promised us that when he had to go to Santa Fe, New Mexico to do his movie, he'd be back. He finished his 48th movie and he'll be here to talk about the environment of living like Ed, a eco-friendly life.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have to ask you to conclude.
Don't conclude, I have some other announcements, they'll just have to wait.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, that is my last card for this portion of oral communications. So, let us move on to the next item.
Through adoption of ordinances, item seven on the agenda, it's 7A is ordinance eliminating the Board of Zoning Appeals and transferring authority and duties of the former Board of Zoning Appeals to the Planning Commission. This was offered on January 13th, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Rule 7A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Gentlemen, I have no speaker cards for this item. Mr. Quintero?
I'm going to vote against it because it's my opinion that one combined board doesn't work as well as a UZA panel and a planning commission while there's not much activity in the city at this point in the economic cycle. I think things will change eventually, and I just like the idea of the two different boards hearing two different patterns of requests and so forth. So, anyway, I'm going to vote against it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weaver, any other input?
No.
Mr. Najarian, Mr. Yusefian? All right. Mr. Kosakian, let us call the roll.
Council members, Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. All right, our next item, please.
Eight is action items and at eight A is city attorney regarding discussion of amendments to enter interim urgency ordinance number 5636 establishing a moratorium on the installation of wireless facilities in residential areas to clarify certain terms thereof. At A1 is the urgency ordinance for introduction.
Okay, with that, let us go to our city attorney, Scott Howard.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Ansoni, General Counsel, Public Works, who will briefly describe the provisions of the ordinance before you, which is an amendment to the moratorium which was adopted last week, a moratorium essentially on wireless facilities, which has now been going to be redefined, as well as a letter that we received from Channel Law Group, LLP.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Ansoni?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before you, it's a proposed urgency ordinance which is meant to amend the temporary wireless facility moratorium that was passed last week. The proposed ordinance would clarify the term wireless facilities in the temporary moratorium. Currently, all wireless facilities are subject to the moratorium so that no permits can be issued for the installation of wireless antennas and any associated facilities in residential zones and in public rights away within 1,000 feet from residential zones. Last week, you may recall, broadcast carrier CBS requested the council to review the scope of the moratorium and consider an exception for broadcast television and broadcast radio services. Their broadcast antennas are located on the tops of the Verdugo Mountains and are remote from occupied residential areas. CBS also argues that the broadcast facilities are regulated by totally different federal regulations, Part 73 and 74 of the California Code of Regulations, and from cellular and cellular-like facilities, they're not functionally equivalent to cellular services. At that time, the council expressed the need to consider those services as exempt from the moratorium and to clarify the original moratorium ordinance, so to focus on the true intent, which was to study the regulation of cellular and cellular-like services that are functionally equivalent in the installation of wireless facilities, especially near residential zones. So, if approved, the proposed ordinance would be clarified to do just that. Cellular telephones, personal communication services and certain types of LAN mobile radio services would be specifically included and all other services, including the broadcast services, would be exempt. In addition, you have before you a letter from a legal representative for Media Flow, which is a company that provides television broadcast services, or actually television services, to cell phones. It is a special type of service that does not fall neatly within the cellular or cellular equivalent type services. This letter brings out the point that at the time that we wrote the staff report, which you have for you tonight, we determined that the Media Flow services operated under FCC Rules 24, which indicates that they're a cellular type of provider. Media Flow, through that letter, indicated that they are operating actually under a different FCC rule, Rule 27. We've researched that and through our research and in consultation with our technical consultant, Jonathan Kramer, determined that indeed Media Flow is correct. They operate under a different bandwidth, under different FCC rules. They are not like cellular facilities. They are also, the proposed antenna that they are intending to put up is going to be co-located with an existing antenna. It's about 4,000 feet away from any residential, residentially occupied properties. They are going to be located in a residential open space zone, but that zone is completely surrounded by an SR zone, which is Special Recreation Zone, it's not residential. Also, because they're located on an existing antenna and they don't fall within the specific rules that we've put out for the proposed ordinance, they are already exempt from the moratorium. And thus, with regard to Media Flow, they are not going to be a part of this ordinance. All other findings to the previous ordinance are going to be the same, and if it's introduced tonight, it would take effect upon a four-fifths vote next week, after which it would take effect immediately. I just wanted to state that again for the, for the audience because in the newspaper press, they indicated it would take place immediately tonight, and that's not the case. Has to be voted by four-fifths vote of the council and that would happen next week if the ordinance is introduced tonight. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, we shall see. As is our policy, I will go to my colleagues, see if they have any immediate questions or comments, then we'll go to the public and then we'll come back. Mr. Yusefian?
I want to understand this. So, basically, Media Flow is not subject to a moratorium, is that correct?
They would not be if this ordinance is introduced this week and passed next week. As it is now, they are subject to the moratorium.
They are subject.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yusefian. We'll go to the public then, and our first speaker is Richard Kendall, followed by Scott Mason. Good.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the council, Mayor. I really came up here in place of my partner who spoke to you last time, who is in fact at the inauguration about which you all spoke, I hope dancing to celebrate the transfer of power tonight. And I really came up just on her behalf to thank both the council and Anson for the hard work in the last week to sort out this knotty situation quickly and get it on the road for next week. I hope an ordinance that should solve some of the inadvertent issues that came up with respect to CBS's broadcast at the tower. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kendall. Our second speaker is Scott Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you recall, last week I mentioned I am the West Coast Director of Engineering for CBS Radio. I'm where the rubber meets the road. And again, I'd like to thank you for hearing us and listening to us last week. We as broadcasters, radio and television, we are not cellular providers. We're in a, we're in a whole different business. It's, it's a different animal. I'd like to thank Glendale for the fairness in adding this potential amendment to the, bringing it to the public and bringing it to the council. And understand that we as broadcasters, we're really the custodians of these licenses. The public owns the airwaves. We respect that as custodians of these licenses. We know that it's our responsibility as broadcasters to meet the public interest and to operate faithfully in, on behalf of the public. It's our responsibility to be a trustee for the public, and we take that very seriously, no matter if it's our radio stations or our TV stations or no matter, no matter what format we're playing on the air. When need be, we are there for you and we appreciate the city of Glendale allowing us to be at their mountaintops and allowing us to serve the public in this way. Again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mason. Our next speaker is Jamie Hall.
Hello, my name is Jamie Hall. I'm actually Media Flow's representative, and I just wanted to thank staff and the city attorney for reviewing our letter and giving it thoughtful consideration. And I also just wanted to emphasize that much like- And I also just wanted to emphasize that, much like the broadcasters, we have a completely different model, and we're not cellular, and we have only one planned site in the city of Glendale, and it's four thousand feet away from residential structures, and this is not something you're going to see in front of your house. So I'm available for any questions you might have, but I just want to thank you again for your thoughtful consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, that's our last speaker on this item. Let me go to my colleagues. Mr. Weaver.
I'll introduce the ordinance at eight B one, I mean, excuse me, eight, eight, eight A one.
Eight A one, right, okay. All right, are there any other comments? Mr. Quintero? Mr. Najarian?
Just, I guess just a comment that although the type of broadcasting is different than what we were looking at in the T-Mobile, that is not so much the criterion that I'm looking at. It's really the aesthetics, the placement, the disruption of the neighborhood, so. So I know we talked about different federal regulations, different types of broadcast regulations, that's, it's really where the antenna hits the road, meets the road that is critical to me, so I would support this at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Yusefian. All right.
Introduced.
The, the ordinance has been introduced, so let's move on to the next item.
At eight B is director of libraries regarding selection of a short-term group to determine a work plan for Glendale Arts Council. At B one is a motion directing staff.
Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. All right. We'll go to Cindy Clary, our director of libraries.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of council, city staff. I'm here to speak about the formation of a arts council in Glendale. In September, a motion was put forth to you, and you approved a new direction for the city's support of the arts in Glendale. The decision was made to create a nonprofit arts council with one half of what is already invested in the Arts and Culture Commission, or seventy-five thousand dollars. The initial goals of the arts council have been identified as programming, small-scale programming, creating a nexus between the business community and the arts with the, with the thought that that would enhance economic development, and fundraising to support any programming that an arts council would, would put forth. This is, the next step is to come up with a process, or we've identified a process, to help us get to the formation of an arts council. And the library in partnership with Parks and the city attorney's office would work on the first step, which would be interviewing interested and available people in the arts community or people that were interested in the arts, on identifying, helping us identify what, what the needs are in the community, what we can do to enhance the involvement of the city in the arts. And once that was done, identify or collate the information and put together a preliminary or a draft of a work plan for an arts council. And then finally, to present the draft of the work plan to the council. Tonight, we're here to ask for your recommendation for participants in the surveying or the interview process. And I've given you a list that I've developed along with the Parks Department on different organizations that, that I've worked with and Parks has worked with in, in music and theater and art galleries and arts organizations as kind of a beginning point for you to, to take a look. And then we're interested in any additional names or organizations that we can contact and hopefully get those from you in the next week, put out a letter to potential participants asking for their interest, and then, then actually doing some kind of interviewing. And that interviewing would happen between the library and the city attorney and, and the Parks Department, once again, to, to gather information about what the regional needs are, what the local needs are, what people see as, as the functions of an arts council.
All right, thank you very much. So then, this list is everything from the children's book signing club, excuse me, the book signing club and the children's corner, to the Glendale Art Association, Glendale Arts, and everything in between. By the way, I did notice that on page two, where it mentions the City of Glendale Arts and Culture Commission, you have the name of the previous chair, but it should include all members of the Glendale Arts and Culture Commission. But in any case, so you haven't contacted these people yet?
Uh, no.
Okay.
We, we wanted to wait for council's input.
So you want to get the council's additions before you contact, and then the contact is to determine whether these people are, are available and when, and to make a schedule to interview them for their input on the work program?
Correct.
Okay, got it. And, oh, and I guess I should probably say, in terms of this list, let's make sure it doesn't get promoted as the list of people who will be interviewed until we at least contact them and see whether or not they can participate or wish to participate.
Correct. And, and the list is by no sign, in no way comprehensive. You know, it's just a beginning point, based on my contacts, Parks contacts, and certainly there, there probably are quite a few names to add.
All right, so what, what kind of timeline do you see? In other words, when do you want our additions?
Uh, we're hoping to get your additions within a week or in about a week, and if you could give your additions to Yasmin Beers and the city manager's office, that would be great.
Okay. All right, let me see if there are questions, and we also, gentlemen, we also have a speaker.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
I want to clearly understand, you and other staff will pick the people on this task force, council will not, right?
Uh, well, we will interview anyone that you suggest, yeah.
But you will select, staff will select.
In addition.
Because, am I correct, Mr. City Attorney, if we were to interview and we were to select, it puts a different connotation on it, does it then make it a brown act?
Potentially, yes.
If we do it. So I just wanted to clarify that. Staff will be doing it.
Mr. Weaver, there's also another distinction, other than legal, it's just that this is not a, this is not an arts council. They're not selecting an arts council.
Oh, I know, I know.
They're simply interviewing people to get information as to a broader input as to what they view. These group of interviewees, you should be in the work program.
I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure that we didn't get into a legal tangle here.
Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najarian.
No, thanks for clarifying that. The staff report was a little confusing at best, but will be, these individuals with a background in the arts will be interviewed to get their ideas as to the framework that will decide whether or not to incorporate it to our arts council.
They will give them input as to things to include in the work program, which is essential, in essence, a contract with ultimately an arts council, an independent, an independent nonprofit.
Thank you.
Mr. Yusefian.
Can I ask a question that may ruffle some feathers?
Have we ever told you no on such a question? And have you ever listened to us? This is the better question. I'm gonna get some water.
You see, he leaves right away. First of all, as you have a list of organizations in here, some of them have no names, I'm assuming you will get some, like.
Yes.
Glendale Center Theater, there's no names, so.
Yeah. No, it's an incomplete list.
You get all of them and put them in there. What I'm trying to understand is, we're going to create another nonprofit organization.
Correct.
Okay. Not too long ago, we took the Alex Theater and we created this art board, basically, which is a nonprofit organization. So my question is, could this somehow be a part of that? So you can, you already have one, so instead of creating another, we'll just encompass them together, so this way you have one art board and maybe some new people in there, and so that comes out? I mean.
I, I think, I mean, that's one of the purposes of interviewing folks in the community, is that those kind of ideals will come forth, and you know, a lot of people are saying that.
Because I see Barry McCombe in here, so I was wondering.
Yeah.
I can answer you in terms of my opinion.
Okay.
And the answer is no. And the reason is because what you're actually talking is Glendale Arts. And Glendale Arts was created basically so that there is a public outreach and, and arts outreach component for what is essentially, in broader terms, the Alex Theater. And that enables them to raise funds from broader sources, to request grants, and so on. They are, strictly speaking, an administrative umbrella organization. They do not do programming. The Alex Theater is, for the most part, a rental house. Even the Alex really doesn't do programming, but we're not even talking about the Alex, we're talking about Glendale Arts. They are a, an administrative umbrella organization that provides, for example, Mr. Yusefian, if you had the Yusefian Playhouse, but you needed assistance with, say, ticket services, you might contact Glendale Arts, and they would help you with your ticket services issues, or perhaps if you needed expertise for the operation of your theater, or if you had a gallery, or what have you. But what they don't do is go out and do programming in the community. They don't go out and do a evening of Shakespeare in the Park. They don't go out and do an evening of poetry and jazz combo, three-person jazz combo at the Adams Square Park, or any other number of, of, they don't do juried art shows, for example, and that sort of thing. So their, their issue is, is strictly administrative, and as, as just one council member, I would be reticent to commit more dollars to the Alex for programming. When I want to, what I want to accomplish for the community is some programming sponsored in part, or facilitated in part by the city. We already have a commitment to the Alex Theater, and it is substantial, but it doesn't include anything for community programming throughout all the regions of the city. So that's, that is, that is why I wouldn't go that direction, and in fact, that's not what we were talking about. We voted to move from an existing arts and culture commission to an independent nonprofit, which would take the task of small-scale programming as a first step, because the city has never had a real organized commitment to arts programming. So that's, that is the, that was the idea.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, because now I truly understand what this is, because I'll be the first one to admit, I've been asked a lot of questions, and I have not completely grasped the difference between those two organizations, and I think you did a fabulous job of explaining what those two organizations do. So thank you very much, I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome.
So all you're asking is if there's any additional organizations we put in here and names and so on and so forth?
Yes.
And when do you want this back?
Uh, about a week.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. We do, we do have, as a speaker, Laura Friedman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Laura Friedman. I would like to commend council for recognizing the current lack of support for the arts and the problems that the former arts commission was facing. My suggestion relates to the mission of the new council. The staff report and the names and organizations that are mentioned on that report deal exclusively with nonprofit arts and culture entities. I wonder whether we are perhaps missing an opportunity by not including people that are, are capable of also dealing with businesses related to arts, culture, and design. By focusing on businesses as well as nonprofits, we have the opportunity to better, I think, create an environment in which nonprofit artses can flourish. It also can become an economic engine that can help drive the city forward and create a self-sustaining type of arts environment. I believe that this sort of third prong to this approach is something that we should consider mixing, making a part of the agenda of this council. Arts industries have, so to that end, I think that this new council might also include people that have a proven record of being able to attract and recruit and identify businesses that are related to these industries, because then they could go out and help to bring those industries into Glendale. Now, if this suggestion is outside of what you consider to be the purview of this board, and I'm glad to have some suggestion that it's not, then maybe it's something that the city should deal with in a different way. But I think it's very important that we have a slight paradigm change, where we stop thinking of arts and culture only as the nonprofit world, and also incorporate the for-profit arts and culture world. I think that they can work together very well, and they could each help each other. So again, I thank you for agendizing this issue and for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Friedman. Mr. Quintero.
Brilliant minds think alike. I think that's the way it goes. But actually, that's exactly what I was going to tell the staff. I made a note, I do think we have to bring in private for-profit companies, the large ones that we all know, the medium-sized companies, the smaller entertainment companies, their employees, and they're going to provide a tremendous help to us, whether it's in the form of volunteer or, but anyway, I think that's what, I think that's what's missing in the names. We have to bring in some private sector professionals that do this for a living, and I'm sure we're going to get some great ideas from them.
To that extent, if I may, Mr. City Attorney, if we can read the, not the motion we're voting on, but the motion that was already passed, that, that, what was it, in September?
Yes.
That, that explains exactly who we are, who we did vote to direct staff to bring into this process, because I think you will see that great minds do think alike, Mr. Quintero. I don't know who has that.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a copy of that, that motion here, so I can certainly do the honors as you'd like. And that was a motion unanimously adopted by the council at its September second, two thousand and eight meeting, where staff was directed to come back to council with a report on the creation, creation of a task force that would address the creation of the arts council as a nonprofit organization, including the composition, goals, scope, legal needs, et cetera, of said arts council, and a work plan for the arts council. The report addressing the task force should include potential membership of arts and culture commissioners on the task force, as well as members of the city's arts community, and a timetable for the task force to complete its work.
Okay, thank you. And the discussion, and the discussion, I'm sorry, Ms. Friedman, I lost you for a moment. There we are. The discussion that evening revolved specifically around professional, professionals in the arts world, both studios, as you were mentioning, but also people with administrative backgrounds in the arts at all levels, including professionals. You may want to take a look at the replay of that, of that meeting, because I think what you suggested was exactly what was discussed that night, and personally, I think that is exactly what is needed, that is not included at this point on this list that was placed before us. So, okay. There's no other discussion?
Motion directing staff.
Okay.
Have they got direction? Or have we got direction?
Actually, we got direction.
Have a.
Well, I, I think that, I think the, it goes in both ways, and so that we have a motion, perhaps you can consider some of the language that I wrote down, and certainly it can be changed if it doesn't accurately reflect what the council would like staff to do, and that would be for the direction that staff contact individuals and organizations pursuant to a list compiled by staff to interview and obtain input on what these individuals and organizations believe should be included in a work plan for an arts council. City council members individually to provide additional names of individuals and organizations to the city manager's office within the next seven days, which can also be contacted by staff and interviewed.
That's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Yusefian.
Uh, this is a very lengthy list, so my question is, how long is it going to take to do all the interviewing, and who's going to do the interview?
Um, we're, we're planning to coordinate it between city attorney's office, the library, and possibly the Parks Department, and we will do it in groups of probably two or three, depending on, on how many people we end up.
And when do you anticipate completing this task?
Uh, we're hoping, well, once the letters go out and people agree, I mean, that will probably take a month from. probably take a month from now before we get to that point. I would say one or two months, hopefully coming...
They agree.
One and two months?
Possibly. Maybe I'm being too optimistic.
I think part of it's going to be determined by how many names end up on that list, how many we add, and how many...
Right. I may be optimistic, but...
And the reason I'm asking is because if we are telling people one and two months, and in two months only you have interviewed 50 people, and there's 200 left, I don't want to set this expectation out there in the community that says, oh gee, the city after two months hasn't done anything. So that's why I ask, because I want a more realistic number. This is a huge list.
So maybe a better approach would be to come back to you in two or three months with an update as to how far we've gotten.
Could I make a suggestion, Mr. Usafian?
Of course.
And that is, because I don't think that answers the concern Mr. Usafian has, and I know it doesn't answer the concern I have, which is very similar. I would suggest that assuming we're able to get our list, our supplemental list, to you in a week, even say 10 days, then I would think, once the letters go out and a couple of weeks for that, and then contacting, doing follow-up on that, I would say that I wouldn't think it would be unreasonable to start your interviews in, at the end of February.
Yeah, I mean, I was suggesting about a month by the time we do that, but four to six weeks seems reasonable to me.
And then, I think, can you come back to us and give us an idea of, I mean, I'm not going to ask you how long it's going to take to do the interviews till you have some idea of how many people are on the list. But can you come back to us and update us?
Of course.
Once that's gone out. I think I'd also like to know whether you had two people respond, or 400 people respond.
Okay, so we'll update you at the point where we know when we're moving forward with the interviews, and how many we're going to be doing.
And that will be very helpful. We know what, ourselves, we know what the process is when people ask us, we know what it is, and how many people are out there.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to note that all the contacts that are listed on this list, as well as the names that you give us, at this point, they haven't been contacted, as you said earlier, and they may not have the time or the ability to go through the interview process. So this is just a list, it doesn't mean that every single person on this list will be agreeable to go through the process. So again, it's a wait-and-see in terms of the number of people that we were going to have.
All right, so you can bring us an update, then, as to where you are. All right. It was a motion and a second. Mr. Kasaki.
Councilmembers, enjoy.
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Usafian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. All right, our next item, please.
Next item at HC is Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services regarding proposed improvements at Maple Park. At HC1 is a motion approving the proposed concept design for the renovation of Maple Park and providing staff with direction on how to proceed with design documents and construction documents for the Maple Plan project.
Okay. With that, let's go to George Chapchan, who's our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor Draymond, members of the city council. What I'd like to do is ask Dave Ahern, who's our capital projects administrator, to come up, and he'll make the presentation on this project. It's his staff that's been working on it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ahern, you're out of time.
He doesn't believe you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the project before the council tonight is the Maple Park renovation and expansion project. Momentarily, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation for council to look at as we walk you through this design. Thank you. The aerial on the screen that you're looking at shows Maple Park. Maple is one of our oldest parks, it's heavily used, it's in the southwest region of the city. It's approximately 3.8 acres, as you can see by the residential around it, it's a high-density residential area. And let's see if I can get to the next slide here. In the next slide, we zoom in a bit on the park itself. You can see that the park has several amenities to it. Here is the community building, approximate 14,000 square foot building, about 43 years old. It also has a tennis court, it has a tot lot, a small parking area, and as you can see by the condition of the lawn area, it's heavily used with mature canopy trees throughout the park. So the project that's being proposed is, well, here's a line diagram that lays it out a little clearer, is an approximate 5,000 square foot addition to the existing community building. We're also proposing to renovate the existing systems within the existing building, so the HVAC system, the electrical, the plumbing, the roof, the gymnasium flooring, all of those major building systems are in need of repair, in need of updating. Here you can see the concept plan that was reviewed by council in October of 2007. In this plan, we had anticipated receiving two grants for $5 million in building a larger gymnasium facility. That grant, the second grant, was not received, and this plan was reviewed by the council and council-directed staff to refine this plan. One of the issues was this large parking area. The community had a strong desire to maintain the, as much green space as could be maintained. Without the addition of the large gymnasium building, the additional parking really wasn't needed. So since our last visit to the council, staff has revised the plan, eliminated that large parking area, shifted the addition, or one of the additions, that was going to be on the existing parking area, and I'm pointing to it here with the cursor, to save that parking, so we wouldn't spend money demolishing existing parking, only to replace it, moving the design here and creating a centralized entry into the park. And that's an important feature for this park. Those of you that are familiar with it know that all the entries are from the outside, there is no real central entry corridor to this park. Another amenity that was strongly desired by the community is a water play area, and that is shown here in the, almost a teal blue. Also, some additional seating areas. There's a senior population that heavily uses this park, where they play card games and that. So those are additions that are also proposed. In order to facilitate this addition, which has a footprint of about 2,700 square feet, about a little over 5,000 square feet in total area, it's a two-level addition, we'll have to remove two trees, two olive trees, and the existing patio area that's in this area now. This is the schematic portion of it, and I'm going to ask our project architect to come up and walk you through the schematic design. Again, this is a concept plan, so we're not at the design stage where we would have real hard figures on construction costs, these are the early estimates. We don't have the work done yet to pick materials and finishes and things of that nature. Until we get the concept approved by you, we wouldn't move forward with that kind of design. So I'll turn it over to the architect, and then I'll stand by, and we'll answer whatever questions that you might have.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ares Anobians, and I'm one of the partners with the former Fluelling and Moody Architects in Pasadena, California, and I have my associate Dave Matheson here with me to go over the project, the scheme, and any questions you may have. As Dave mentioned, one of the critical things about adding this addition to this existing building is to create a point of entry, which is desperately needed at this facility. One of the reasons is for security reasons. It's very important for the staff to be able to see who's coming and who's leaving, and especially after our activities, there would be one point of entrance. This would be the area that we've allocated, because it gives visibility to the playground area, which is here, and also to the tennis court area and to the overall part of the park campus. Reception and staff area is here. Toilet facilities are provided to be used by parents who bring their kids to the kindergarten, or, excuse me, to the playground area. Elevator and stairs to the second floor, which to serve the existing gym, which will be completely renovated. We have, we are maintaining most of the facility on the first floor intact. We're improving the quality of the rooms, there will be air conditioning added to the facility, and we're maintaining the existing toilet facilities that were built few years ago by special funding, and a sun dial tower which was built over it. This is a larger view of that entrance. Reception and staff office, elevator, stairs, elevator equipment. The shaded area basically depicts the circulation pattern for the first floor. Restroom, men's and women's. And again, the existing facility will be maintained as is, with the exception of some improvements, including air conditioning. Second floor, elevator stairs. The lobby has a sort of an open feeling with a two-story high-volume space. New toilet facilities for the gym, which will be renovated completely. New spectator seating area here, and there is a small terrace, this area which could be used as a pre-reception area for any function that may happen at the gym. This is a roof plan that indicates the existing roof of the gym, the new roof, which also creates a shelter for the new equipment, which would be added for the air conditioning. To the right is the existing facility, to the left is the new addition with the terrace. This is the east elevation, which is basically the new addition. In the background, you'll see the existing roof and the existing sun dial here. This is the south elevation, which again depicts the existing facility, and to the right is the new addition. And the shaded area really is not the material, the material would be matching the existing facility, we just wanted to have a way of depicting which is new and which is old. This is an existing east-west elevation which will remain. And this is a perspective view looking from sort of little bit west of the tennis courts, looking southwest. Again, I'm sorry? Yes, this will be the last slide, and this is the existing facility, this is the new piece being added. And do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Will there be any downtime in the park while renovation addition is going in?
Councilman Weaver, there'll be some downtime to a portion of the park building. We'll be able to maintain the programming that goes on, but when we take out the gymnasium floor, there's nothing on site that would allow us to maintain the basketball function.
Will this be, will the schedule be geared towards a time when that is not as much in use, the gymnasium portion?
I don't think so. I think the goal is, once we get going with this, to get it going as fast as we can. One of the ways that we'll be able to keep the other programming on-site may include shifting the first-floor programs to the second floor while we renovate the first floor. Unfortunately, there's nowhere on-site to shift the basketball function, other than to take it over to Pacific Park.
Okay, so...
So for a while, we'll be without basketball.
And you'll know later the schedule.
We will, and we've been meeting with recreation staff and working out a plan to keep it on-site and use the existing building without having to bring trailers on-site or lose those functions.
My last question, the entrances to the gymnasium now, will they be shut down and be for emergency exit only?
They will be. We'll put panic hardware on those doors, and then we'll be able to control that entry into the building, so staff knows when people are in-stairs inside the building using that, something they currently don't have an ability to manage.
One other question. Will we consider any kind of video surveillance from offices, they can monitor what's going on around the facility?
We've been looking at that at this park, and we're currently reviewing different systems for that.
Okay. All right. Let me just ask my colleagues if they have any further comments before we go to the public.
We can go to the public, I'll ask the gentleman.
All right. Our first speaker, don't go far away. You have more to tell us.
Just one more thing before we go. Staff is very aware how committed this council is to environmentally sensitive design, green building design functions. One of the project architects here tonight can tell you in detail the types of approaches that we'll be taking to addressing those environmentally sensitive issues, if you'd like to hear that. And we can give that to you now, or wait for questions that you might have later. But we have considered that, at this early stage of the design, we don't get into what exactly is going to be used, but that is part of the evaluation, and that's absolutely on our mind, we're aware of it, the consultant's aware of it, and we'll be evaluating all the systems that we use in the building for environmental sensitivity, for eco-friendly design, recycled materials will be used where they can be, all of those things that council has directed us to look at in the past.
Well, to the extent they can speak about it in any kind of specificity, we could hear them if they're just going to tell us in generalities that we're going to give you a green design, and it's going to keep our wishes in mind. I'd rather wait till you have something to actually, no need to do a lot of barking unless you have something to say, in other words.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. If that's the case, let's hear from the public. Nancy Kent, followed by Herbert Milano.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale, two blocks east of Maple Park. I attended the two community meetings at Maple Park about this project, and I was delighted to see in this staff report that the proposed water play area has been moved from the middle of a central open space grassy area, so now it's proposed to be right next to the tot lot. And thank you, that's good. Regarding picnic tables, it's great that the proposal has two areas that each have four picnic tables close together. Right now, there are many picnic tables in Maple Park, but every table is far away from all the others, so they are not good for a group of more than eight people to have a picnic. I made a suggestion about the picnic tables when this was on the agenda, October 2007, and it was not done, and I will state it again, and I hope the council will consider asking for it. The proposal shows these four tables that are near each other, all being somewhat separated from each other, and I have a low-tech graphic here, visuals. The, let's see, I think that you should put the short edges of two tables that are right next to each other, right next together, to make them more convenient for large groups. So instead of this, put the two right next together with large groups in mind. Picnic tables in our parks cannot be moved, so wherever two tables are almost end-to-end, please decrease the separation to zero. I would also suggest changing any trellis roofs to solid roofs for two reasons. Solid roofs would provide maximum shade, and they will keep off water when it rains. At the community meetings, and every time this is on the city council agenda, I request using the LEED Sustainable Building Guidelines for any new buildings or major renovations. And I wish that all city construction would be LEED construction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kent. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of the city council and city staff. It is with a significant sense of appreciation that I watch the type of capital improvements in the areas of Glendale... in the areas of Glendale that have the highest density. It is my hope that as these type of projects are being presented to the public in this type of venue, that we give a framework with regard to the need of parkland and what this particular project does fulfill the needed parkland in the densest part of Glendale. It would be nice to have an idea or a recap of what does the general plan say concerning parkland throughout Glendale? Or what does the land use element say about the use of parkland and providing parkland for the city? What does the recreational open space element say about providing parkland? Because it's only when we have an opportunity like this to say that these areas that are generally designated through the recreational planning areas are the most deficient in parkland in the city of Glendale. I happen to have the information, but I did not do it in time to be able to show you. Generally, these areas have a fairly minuscule amount of parkland per thousand residents. Guidelines that have been written extensively on throughout all of your planning documents say that the goal for Glendale is to have six acres per thousand residents. The excuse you're usually given is that we have no opportunities to be able to bring open space and additional parkland in areas that are already with significant amount of, of density. And I was wondering if perhaps there are opportunities in the areas adjacent to this park that may allow us to basically take opportunities, now that the prices of homes are lower, to basically expand it. These areas in Glendale have one or less acres per thousand residents, whereas the areas further north, for example, around Honolulu towards Lacrosse Center Park, have six acres per thousand. The areas on Glen Oaks Canyon, six acres per thousand. Generally, the areas south of the 134 freeway have one acre or less per 1,000 residents. So it is my hope that when these plans are being presented and these investments are being made, that we basically present the incredible need that these communities have for the adequate kind of parkland, because many parks serve a very small segment of the population. Children under five, adults over 75, but you have this middle segment that is underserved. A community park should be able to serve at least residents up to a half a mile away. And that's a significant amount of density for such a small park, even at three and a half acres. So it is my hope that these things are presented in perspective. And perhaps someone from Parks and Rec can give us the statistics about this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Milano.
Hey, Mayor.
Evening.
Councilman. I think this sounds like a curmudgeon. Little headline news on state labor to meet jobless demand. The city has no, the state has no money. If I read the GNP this morning, there's no grant money for this, for this project from the state. Am I right about that, by reading, gentlemen? Yes, no? Mr. Mayor, does, does they have grant money for us? City manager? Because if we don't have the grant money, then why are we going through this exercise of having staff spend time on this project and other projects? If anything, we're going to be laying people off. We have to come up with money to cover cowpers. We don't have money for the city for these projects, even if they're sending grants. We have the unions who want their money, and they want their pensions too. We don't have the money for the unions and the pensions. We want social security for those pensioners instead of... Again, I'm all for parks, especially in the southern part of the city. But we don't have any money, and we're having staff spend time as an exercise to me of fertility, fertility. Why? How much more do we have to go? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. All right, that was our last speaker. Let me go to Mr. Yusefian and stand up, and I would just tell you that obviously staff heard you on one thing, Mr. Yusefian. I noticed that the grassy areas of the park schematics were green, and the water features were blue.
Blue, that's right. Could we put Exhibit 3 back up again? Exhibit 3. It's your schematic.
Other way. Keep going.
That's it?
One forward.
One forward. Okay, could you get the lights, please?
One more. Right there, there you go.
That one?
No, no. Exhibit 3.
A full park.
A full park.
There you go.
Okay, that's it. Okay. Couple of questions, because this happened to us when we were doing the Adams Hill. The pads that are for those picnic, how big are they?
For the new ones?
Yeah.
Second?
Because if, if it's scale, it's almost two of them the size of that tennis court, you know?
Is this a concept drawing?
It is a concept drawing, but I can tell you.
You already have it?
I can tell you exactly how big they are.
How big are the tables then, too? Twenty feet?
Twenty feet? They're about, they're about eight feet in diameter.
Eight feet? No way.
That's impossible.
They're approximately 30 feet in diameter.
Thirty feet in diameter?
That's correct.
Okay. My recommendation will be to make it, the concrete, a little bit less, because that's what happened when we did the other park. We made those huge pads for those little tables. So make it a little bit less. I like the idea of connecting two of them, but the problem when, when you connect two of them, if they're close together, then your back is against somebody else, maybe in a V shape you could do. So if, if there's two separate parties, they can kind of have a little privacy, but nevertheless have the ability to sit down in there. Also, all the other walkways, they're already there, they're existing, right?
Almost all of them are existing.
Are you, with the exception of the, with the, the area that you're putting the picnic tables and right there, you're not adding any more?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I'm just kind of worried about all the extra part. I just don't want any more concrete, okay? Are we doing anything to upgrade as part of this project, to upgrade all the, the grass that is almost dead or does not exist in the center? Are we replanting those?
Well, we'll at least look at reseeding. Depending on where the bids are, we may do some re-sodding.
Okay. As far as the building itself is concerned, I'd like to have that guy who was sustainable, whatever, whoever is the expert, come on up.
You must tell us your name, because to this point, you're just Mr. Sustainable.
Sure, exactly.
I'm Dave Matheson. Flying Moody as well.
Mr. Matheson.
Yes.
Couple of suggestions. As you know, this council is very much into green. And one question, you're going to put a whole bunch of bathrooms in this facility. Maple Park currently gets recycled water?
Councilman Yusefian, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if we have it run there. We checked that, but.
I don't think so. I haven't heard.
Okay. Any recycled water line close by that can go there?
I'd have to research it. I don't know.
We'll find out.
And the reason I'm asking is because if it is, then we'd like to see recycled water used for the toilets.
Absolutely.
If it's not, then you may want to plum it just in case for the future.
Sure.
The other thing is the urinals, are they waterless?
It's, it, like I said, we haven't really gone into specifics, but certainly that's one of the options, yes.
Okay. Also, the roof on the building is kind of curved. I don't know how that would work. It may require some redesigning. Have you considered putting solar panels on it? Because there are no trees around it.
Right now, the budget, it does cost a little bit more, even though they do pay for themselves over time, I think the budget doesn't allow you that upfront cost, right?
You may want to check with GWP on that.
Sure, if, if you can get rebates, we would certainly.
There's a rebate, and also I think a couple of oil companies are underwriting some of these things just to look green.
Or they'll finance it also for a long period of time.
Right. So those were my main questions. I wanted to make sure that, as our mayor says, just don't tell me it's nice and green, you know?
Yeah, we do have some specific strategies beyond just, you know, just saying it's green. I mean, we, we, just the energy efficiency is what we're looking at right now with a remodel project. Like, when we pick out the equipment, it's going to be, it's got to be energy efficient. The lighting has to be T5 or T8 lighting, which is also saving 20, 30% on your, on your bills. We have occupancy sensors, so the lights go off automatically when people aren't using it, just to help keep your bills down. Cool roof, like when we do re-roof it, we can put a light-colored roof to reflect heat away from the, from the building. Dual, dual pane glazing, so that you'll have less heat gain from sun during the day. So just those basic strategies.
Most of those are Title 24 issues you have to do anyway.
Exactly.
So it's not moving us further down to a point that we can get a LEED certificate?
I think the, I think the point is, when you have something more than a concept here, and you have developed a plan, is what I was trying to say earlier, then, then let's hear about it. There's no, no point at this point, because you, as Mr. Ahern stated from the, from the jump here, that there was nothing specific you can tell us with regard to this design at this point.
That's correct.
But clearly, just as Mr. Yusefian is saying, clearly everyone on this council would like to see those elements, I mean, literally see them in the project, but we'd also like to see them here, so that we can discuss it when we get, when and if we get to that point. Thank you, Mr. Matheson. Mr. Yusefian.
One more question. I don't know if Mr. Chapchan is going to answer, or you, because it was before you. Maybe Mr. Chapchan can answer. And it has to do with the money. The $3 million was received by this city or, or brought to this city when I was mayor, that was four years ago, and Dario Fromer, and I still have the picture in my office, was there to announce the, the grant that we received. I have not been mayor for four years. So my question is, why has this taken four years to get to this point that now state is in trouble, so they have basically frozen all the?
Funds?
The grant funds, yeah.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Yusefian, let me take a crack at answering that for you.
He's a brave one, isn't he?
The, for the past several months, staff, when this was brought to you in October, staff was working on this project. And then the, the bathroom projects, as you recall, Dunsmore and Glen Oaks Park became much larger projects than bathroom projects. And so staff was pulled off the, the design of this and moved on to those projects, as those projects became significantly larger. So staff was working on that. So, so that's what's happened between October and today. As you know, I'm new in this position as, as the administrator.
That's why I didn't want to put you on the spot, because you weren't here when we got that money.
There were, there were individuals in, in the position that I'm in that aren't in it now. And part of those issues relate to what you're discussing tonight. So I'm.
Let me go back to the question.
Keenly aware of the need to move things forward in a timely manner.
Let me ask you a question that was asked by a speaker. We have no money. My understanding is the $3 million is still ours.
That's correct.
It's just a matter of the state getting their act together, and the minute they have a budget, then they unfreeze some of this. Am I correct? I see your head bobbing, because maybe.
Mr. Chapchan?
Mayor Raymond, members of the city council, that is correct. And, and in fact, there are 1,200 other projects similar to ours in the state that are in the predicament. So as soon as they unfreeze it, the money will, will come back. That's why we're asking right now to freeze the project right now. No sense spending any more money. Prove the concept, and once that money is unfrozen, then we can move forward.
And how long would it take for us to get our project shovel-ready?
I think you've got the schedule, don't you, Dave?
Sure, go ahead. Excuse me. We, in order to get ready for completed construction drawings, we need about seven or eight months from today.
Okay, so with eight months, hopefully, the state of California can get their act together, so this way we can get some of our money.
We would be ready to bid it at that point, and then we need a couple of months for bidding.
Thank you. You answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. Dave, I've been to the park several times, and almost every time I'm there, I'm accosted by those gentlemen, those seniors, where they're, they're pretty spry when they want to catch you. And what they, what they all say is, we want more tables. So I see you have a bunch of new tables there. I mean, it gets a lot of use.
Sure.
They're very, they're very low-maintenance type of individuals out there. They just want a place to sit down and flat surface. I'm sure they would appreciate everything going on in the gym and all that, but the more tables you can get there, the better. So if you can even add a few more, tuck them, you know, around any corners, they will be used. The second thing is, it's slightly off-topic, and that's regarding the trees in that area. They also complained to me about a infestation in those trees of biting gnats. And they say they bite seriously enough to draw blood from you. I don't know if our tree expert has looked into that, but they're literally, you know, begging, please do something about these trees, whether they need just a good trimming or if there's an infestation of some sort, please, please see what you can do. I don't think that should be a huge budget item.
Sure, got it.
Lastly, I, looking at your, looking at the elevation, Exhibit 4F, the proposed concept north elevation, I don't like that roof line of the new building at all. And I've proposed a new design. Are you ready?
Excellent.
Nancy Kent-style. And, and the existing, the existing gym is a wonderful design. It almost looks like a mountain peak, and if you match the other adjacent building to look like a smaller mountain peak, is this getting on there?
Does that look like Mount Arat or something?
It could be, it could be, but we don't want to tab any, any particular nationality to it. But there it is, the, the main mount, the main with a slightly smaller, without too much difficulty. I think you could actually argue that you're throwing in a little bit of artwork in the, in the design as well.
I think I see Noah's Ark resting right there.
Right in the middle.
Right there.
Just a thought. But it looks a little bit awkward. I think a, a smaller echo of the larger mountain would look really good for Mosses Park, I mean, Maple Park. Thank you.
Since I'm Armenian descent, I can address that probably. First of all, let me address a couple of things that the community members brought up. It was a pleasure working with them. A couple of the members are very, very active, and I do want to mention that we are providing some sheltered areas, which I failed to point out earlier, to the south side of the project where the entrance is. There's also a solid sheltered area which serves as shelter for parents who bring their children to the playground area. As for the roof piece, yes, it is a very unique structure, the original structure, but you also have an element onto the south side of it, which is that sundial, which is a very odd shape, that adds to the complexity of this small project. So we try to mimic the existing roof line, also trying to shelter or provide some type of a shelter to the equipment that's going to have to fit. We're trying to put all the equipment on the roof, so we don't have to take away anything from the open areas that are available. So we're trying to put all the equipment that requires for air conditioning a very large gym and an existing facility plus a new building. So in order, the roof line was there to mainly provide sort of a visual camouflage, camouflaging the equipment that goes up on the roof. And, and it, we basically took the same outline of the existing structure and tried not to add new elements to this already very complex and very unusual piece, plus the sundial, plus a new element. So we tried to kind of mimic the existing structure, so it does look like a continuation of the existing.
Okay, very good. Let us go on to Councilmember Quintero.
I'm happy with the layout. I think you've done a good job, especially moving the water play area into that, into that location. I also think we need to, the concrete pads, I don't think have to be particularly... I don't think have to be particularly large. The more green, the better. Maybe moving the, the tables together is also a good idea. In terms of the green capability of the buildings, I absolutely want to see solar panels on these buildings. This is the right location, it's the right time, so more expensive, it absolutely is not more expensive. So we need to investigate how we can put solar panels and make this as green as possible, using the right materials and the other, everything that was mentioned obviously makes sense. We need to take that next step and put in solar panels. And overall, I'm very happy with the design. I think it's a great, great design, and hopefully we'll be able to find the money to do it, and we'll get it done real soon. Certainly, the residents in this part of Glendale need it. And as we all know, Maple, I drove by Palmer Park yesterday, and it was packed. Had I driven by Maple, I'm sure it also would have been packed. So let's move forward with it, and hopefully we'll be able to find the money and get it done soon.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weaver.
My concern, I think I heard you say you're going from a concept drawing to construction drawings. You're not going through a design phase so we can see a cost estimate. We've been burned on this before by going from concept-
But, but, but he's shaking his head, no, that that's not correct.
That's what I heard.
That's what I said, I misspoke. We, the next phase is design development drawings. You'll be reviewing that, and then we'd go to construction drawings.
With a cost estimate.
Absolutely.
And I presume there's a reason that the concrete pads are the size they are. When you come back with a design, you can cite whatever regulations, qualifications dictate having that amount of space around the tables. I assume they're eight-foot tables? Yes, and eight-foot tables, that's 16, that's over half of the 30-foot right there, without counting the spacing, while walking around them.
They're eight-to-10-foot tables, pretty standard park table.
You're saying eight. So if they were 10, that's 20, and it's space between the two, and space on the outside to walk around, you're getting near 30 feet. The other, other thing, yes, solar panels, if it's possible, whatever. But again, it's, when you start adding up the cost on this, that's my concern. I, I, yeah, I believe putting it on the shelf for now. This grant gets out, that's one thing. But you have $1.5 million out of the general fund. And next week, we're gonna cut over $8 million out of the general fund budget, or the city budget. So whether it'll still be in the budget after we get through trimming, I don't know. So freezing it at this point in time, fine. If there's money to go ahead and do design drawings or whatever, fine. But ultimately, it's gonna be built, no doubt about it. Trying to push ahead too far before we have the grant money and the general fund money, doesn't make sense to me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Did you wanna respond to that at all, or?
No, sir, only the, Mr. Mayor, the, the recommendation from staff is asking for adoption of the, the concept drawings, and then freezing the project until we have the grant funds released to us. This is a natural breaking part, point in the design process. So if we could nail down the concept, then we'd be well positioned to move forward.
All right. So just, just to be clear, what you're asking for is to approve the concept drawing. The recommendation is also to freeze the project as it is until we have the funds to move forward.
That's correct.
Okay. So I think that pretty well answers all the concerns about the, the funding. We're not voting to fund this at the moment. Just one, one second, Mr. Yusefian, I'll come right to you. The other thing is, you've heard questions from most of the colleague, most of my colleagues about, or recommendations about the green elements, the sustainable elements, the solar panels and so on. Obviously, you get the drift that we want that, that we would like to see that incorporated. And there's been a number of questions about the, the cement pads. I don't need the answer, because this is a concept drawing, and it'll either be reduced or explained as to why it should be that size at this point. I think, let's try to keep the discussion kinda focused on the issue at hand. Do we approve this concept drawing? It is not for funding right now, or at least that's not what they're recommending. And we're not really here to get into the specifics of, you know, the, every nuance of it. It's a concept drawing. They'll be coming back with a design, in a design phase next. That's where we can give all of our input about whether we like this piece of equipment, or it should be over there, or all the stuff we do so well and take so much time doing. About right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Yusefian.
What it would cost us to move forward to the design phase?
We're probably looking in the $150,000, $200,000 range.
Okay. One other thing on the bathrooms, especially, a lot of women ask me this question. Is there a changing room for the kids?
There'll, there'll be changing stations in the first-floor bathrooms.
Okay.
And those interior bathrooms are specifically to address that issue in that part.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
And men change diapers too, sometimes.
Well, there's a, there's a men room in here.
We have two, two restrooms for them as well.
Thank you for clarifying that.
These men have thought of that.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else? Okay. Where are we with this?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
I'll move eight, after the city attorney speaks.
Yes, Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, both because there, there is a grammatical error in the motion, and also based on the, the comments heard, I'd offer up some minor changes to the motion. Council would hereby approve the concept plan for renovation of Maple Park as outlined in the staff report dated January 20, 2009, attached exhibits, and council comments, period. Staff has directed a whole further development of the project until state grant funding previously approved but now frozen is released, or until otherwise instructed by the council.
That's my motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
May I ask us one question, though?
Yes, sir.
You said the grant funding, so is there assumption there that the general fund money is there?
I'm not assuming anything. It'll be, once, once that grant fund, well, there's an assumption that there's money available as either a match, or in some fashion, but I've given you the additional flexibility to, to determine that if the grant funding is not released, or if it is, there's otherwise instructions by council to move forward.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
I just-
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Would like to, I will be voting for this, but I will be reserving my right to be a thorn in their side at a later meeting.
All right. Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Yusefian?
It is my understanding that there is $1.5 million in our capital improvement budget we have put aside for this project a while back. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So it's not that we don't have the money. We have the money to at least start. I won't vote for this, and the reason I won't vote for it is, is because I think we should move forward, spend that $150,000, at least get the design ready. It's gonna take seven months just to get shovel-ready. And we have $150,000, $1.5 million sitting, sitting in there, and if we use $150,000 of them to start moving just the project forward on design, by the time they are done with their design and we're ready to spend real money, it's seven months down the road. If the state of California cannot get their budget straightened out in seven months, we have bigger problems, folks.
And we ought to talk about this next week.
Oh.
It's the budget.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Yusefian, and normally, I would agree with you. However, I would fully expect that we would hear from certain members of the public who would come up here day after day after day, and criticize you on that, because after all, we don't have that funding for, yet, from the, that, those funds haven't been released. And apparently, any money in our capital improvement budget is taking away from our general fund, and that's causing the budget gap. And that's all we hear up here from certain people, is that capital improvement projects are causing the budget gap. I don't mean you've said that. I'm talking about people who come up here week after week after week and write it in the paper, capital improvement is causing the budget gap, whether it's Rockhaven or Maple Park. So since we don't know for sure that we will have that funding, perhaps we should not touch that million and a half, because we may need it to close our budget gap. I'm being facetious, I hope you understand.
I understand that. And, and I understand what the public comes out and says, but in many cases, we know what our budgetary process is, what it is. So I, I have not been one of those people who says, no, we shouldn't have done Rockhaven. I, even if I had to do it again, I would do it. That's not the issue.
Add to that the pool at Pacific Park, add to that the complete remodel of Joe Bridges' Hall, right in your neighborhood.
So what are we supposed to do? Then we freeze everything? Does that mean that Pacific Pool is gone? All this stuff is gone?
We're gonna talk about this next week.
Oh, but we're making a decision on this one tonight.
Not on the move.
So why don't we just postpone this until we decide that one then?
What he's getting at, Mr. Weaver, is that he would prefer not to vote in favor of this motion, because the motion is to not move forward to the design phase.
Well, we can either continue it over until we do the budget-
Mr. Najarian?
I suggest that we bifurcate the issue. One, the first is approving the concept design. I, I don't think we had a lot of disagreement on that. The second one, which we can get a clearer picture on next week when we do our budget study session, would be to order it into the design stage.
Well, and, and my, my, and that's exactly what I'm saying, is let's, let's agree on the design. I think we all have concurrence on the design. The issue of the money is, let's decide that next week after we deal with the budget.
I'll withdraw my motion. If the second or we'll do, do it too. Okay, now I'll make, now, Mr. City Attorney, can you make it?
Mr. City Attorney, you're, you're poised and ready, so far be it from me to restrain you.
A, a new possible motion could be that the council hereby approves the concept plan for the renovation of Maple Park as outlined in the staff report dated January 20, 2009, attached exhibits, and council comments, period.
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? That's satisfied. All right. Mr. Kasakian?
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Raymond?
Yes. All right. Thank you all on that.
Thank you to my colleagues. Appreciate it.
Our next item.
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Our first speaker is Gabriella Sullivan, followed by Joseph, Joe Avignon.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm here to make representations on behalf of Luna Playhouse for its future, and we need some financial help from the council. As I said earlier, it has been said that the quality of a community is reflected by the provision it makes for its poor, and the attention and sophistication of its arts and culture. Glendale has spent millions on developing business in the city. The Americana is wonderful to visit, but I personally don't know anybody who can afford to buy clothes there. So that was a huge, huge project. I don't see that it was worth the investment. For three and a half years at Luna Playhouse, we have been totally financing it ourselves, the construction and running of the theater. People volunteered and worked tirelessly to make this dream a reality. We paid the rent for eight months while we complied with the very stringent regulations of the city. You finally gave us a break by reducing the toilet requirement from six to four for our 40-seat theater. For three and a half years, we have served a wide multicultural audience. We have produced plays for the Chinese, Hispanic, Jewish, Irish, Armenian, American community. We have done theater for children. We have operated a policy of positive discrimination in our auditioning and casting. We have done a classic play, The Importance of Being Earnest, by Oscar Wilde, with an all African-American cast. We have brought audience to Glendale from the surrounding areas and counties. Aramaz Stapanian, the artistic director, has himself spent more than $200,000 on Luna Playhouse. His partner, Mauro Parayan, has also invested time, money, and energy into this venture. We have received no funding whatsoever, but we didn't wait for businesses to come and support us. We went and did the work. We didn't set up any committees to research the feasibility of it. We took our time, energy, and talents and made the Playhouse work. Aramaz has given unreservedly to this community for almost 20 years, putting his own needs, putting the needs of the community before his own. He is passionate about theater and literature, and the benefit of the common good. He deserves the opportunity to continue the work. Finally, a cautionary note to the members of the council, Aramaz's degree is in theater and politics. If he's prevented from doing the former, then he'll focus on the latter. Council members, he has already picked up a package to apply to be a council member and to run for city council. So even if it is only motivated, only motivated by self-interest, let him continue running Luna Playhouse, and avoid a revolutionary mind disrupting the equilibrium of the Glendale City Council. I was very happy to hear the mayor agree that not enough commitment has been made to the arts in Glendale. And you, you're, I don't know who did it, but the, an outside company was brought into Glendale to do Shakespeare in the Park. There are many, many talented, committed people in Glendale, and you should put your money where your mouth is, as we did, and made Luna a dream come true. So please consider the future of this. The Alex, I don't know how much money you have directed to it, but if it's just a processing organization, we've actually done the work, and we've served the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joseph Avignon, followed by Barry Allen.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. I'm here to speak about the smoking ordinance for the city of Glendale. I've read it, I've received a copy from the Neighborhood Services. I went over it this past week. I've been a businessman in the city of Glendale for 38 years. I've owned a cocktail lounge in the Montrose area. I've operated with no problems with the city of Glendale, no problems with the state of California ABC Licensing Board. I've never had any problems with the state. According to the state regulations, the state labor code laws allowed me to have smoking in my bar after January 1, 1998, because Labor Code, Section 60404.5, stated that I was able to have, if I had five or less employees, I could permit smoking. So that's the way we've been operating until the city of Glendale has passed the law October 6, which now says there is no smoking in a public business. I think this, the government should not interfere with private enterprise. I understand the city of Glendale is trying to make air clean for all people in the city of Glendale. What's happening right now, if you are familiar with Glendale, or Montrose, right in front of my store on Honolulu Avenue, there's a circle that measures out 20 feet from my door. So people go out there and smoke. Next door to me, there are two restaurants. The restaurants only have the sidewalk where they set up their seating. With, if those people were to stay 20 feet from a doorway, they would be out in the middle of the street. So they also come to that same circle and smoke. Now, there's three cans there to allow them to throw butts in. There's a can by my front door, there's a can by my back door. Nobody uses the can. Everybody throws their butts on the ground. My argument here is that I feel that being a businessman in the city of Glendale, not having a problem with the state, but maybe the city would give certain consideration to allow those people that do smoke to get off the- to allow those people that do smoke to get off the sidewalk where they intimidate people because they're all standing out there in a group, smoking, and people with their families walk by are intimidated by it. So if they were put back inside the building, where there wouldn't be those cigarette smoke butts all over the ground, there wouldn't be those ugly cans in the circle where people sit or people try to get a donut, newspaper, and be happy, I think because of my position and being in business that period of time, that this council should consider, given me the opportunity to bring those smokers back into the building where we service the ashtrays, we clean the ashtrays, we throw away the butts, they're not scattered all over the street, then business would go on as normal. I would appreciate any consideration you could give me this time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Avignon.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to mention one thing. I felt that the smoking proposition, it should be a choice. It shouldn't be, because private enterprise means that I had to put my money up to buy the business. I had to buy the building. I own the ground with the building stands. But I can't smoke inside my building if I chose to smoke. So I feel there are enough places in the city of Glendale that you can make it a choice. If ninety percent or more of my patrons are smokers, because I've been operating as a smoking bar thirty-eight years, that I should have the right to put a sign on the front of my store explaining to anybody that might want to come in that there is, this is a smoking bar. If you're more than welcome to come in, if you can handle the smoke, if you don't like smoking, if smoking hurts your physical being, please go to another store. There's more than enough around. So that's the way I feel. If there's anything you can do to help me, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Avignon. I know that you haven't been down here in a while, or maybe not at all, but we respond to the speakers at the end of the speakers. So if you'd like to wait, you may hear a colleague respond or staff. All right. Barry Allen, followed by Christian Arbid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public. History was made today in Washington, D.C., a new beginning for a new day. A new president, Barry Obama, who supports a responsible, accountable government and an empowered citizenry to watch, monitor, and measure that accountability. As responsible citizens, it is our responsibility to make certain that the wishes of the people are carried out by those who hold elective office and those who have been appointed, hired, or retained to fulfill the needs of the community. To quote President Obama, "The question we ask today is not whether our government is too big or too small, but whether it works, whether it helps families find jobs at a decent wage, care they can afford, and a retirement that is dignified." Where the answer is yes, we intend to move forward. Where the answer is no, programs will end. And those of us who manage the public's dollars will be held to account to spend wisely, reform bad habits, and do our business in the light of day, because only then can we restore the vital trust between a people and their government. He went on to say, "What is required of us now is a new era of responsibility, a recognition on the part of every American that we have duties to ourselves, our nation, and the world, duties that we do not grudgingly accept but rather seize gladly. Our city can start fulfilling this new era by shining a bright light on closed sessions, by supporting First Amendment rights, by making contracts and change orders easily accessible to the public, as President Obama is doing, by being fiscally accountable, and by remembering and acting upon the words of Henry Clay. Government is a trust, and the officers of the government are trustees. And both the trust and the trustees are created for the benefit of the people. We citizens also have an awesome responsibility, as put into words by Albert Einstein. The strength of the Constitution lies entirely in the determination of each citizen to defend it. Only if every single citizen feels duty-bound to do his share in this defense are the constitutional rights secure." Congresswoman Diane Watson continued the theme. "It is our duty to watch over the actions and activities of government and to insist that, in words as well as deeds, the interests of our constituency are served. This is the price and the promise of citizenship." Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Christian Arbid, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council. My name is Christian Arbid. I am a loss mitigator with offices at 100 North Brand and in Palm Springs and Highway 111. It is definitely not earth-shattering and breaking news that the economy is at a standing point and it continues to get worse. And with that, we see just an increase of foreclosures that not only affect Southern California but Glendale. In the last thirty days, we've seen unfortunately a churn of events where we are seeing a number of foreclosures. In fact, in the last twenty-four hours, we've seen fifteen just in the city of Glendale. So we're over four hundred pending foreclosures in the city, and we don't see a decrease or any sign of any better numbers and decreasing figures. My point to you this evening is to bring to your attention something that the city council of Lancaster and the city council in Huntington Beach are doing. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but they've put together a program where they are purchasing foreclosed homes and either selling them as affordable units and affordable housing, or even leasing them to city staff members and members of the police department or fire department, so that the employees remain within the city. The city of Huntington Beach came up with their program about four weeks ago, where they've currently received over a hundred responses from individuals that are interested in purchasing these affordable housing units, whether they be condos or single-family residences. So, and this is definitely the wrong time to be discussing about where to find money as we're in a deficit, but maybe if we took a good, hard look, we could maybe find, you know, X amount of dollars and pick up a few condos, two, three hundred thousand dollars apiece, what have you, and stimulate our local economy here as well. You know, we will see property taxes arise out of those as well, and it might be a win-win situation all the way around. So as an increased revenue source, but you know, my point this evening is, we may be handed some lemons, and it may be best to see if we can take those lemons and turn them into lemonade, and see what other cities and other council members are doing in those cities, maybe learn from them. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arbid. Margaret Hammond, followed by Vahan Aladri. Thank you, Aladri. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I want to start off with the fact that, and repeat it again, that the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council will be hosting the candidates' forum on February the 18th at seven o'clock at the Central Library, and all candidates are being invited, and I guess there's quite a few candidates. The moderator will be Will Rogers, and of course parking, there's parking validated and on the street and so forth, and we will have refreshments. So anybody that's interested, it's free, come and hear what your candidates have to say about their platforms and the questions that will be asked and so forth. Again, everybody is welcome, and all candidates are invited. Something I'd like to bring up, and it's something that I happen to be a member of the Clean and Beautiful Committee, a volunteer in there, and we work very closely with city staff, the Neighborhood Services. And we have the ideas, a lot of time, the volunteers, and the staff carry out and do whatever they can to help us. Now, on Saturday, you may not know, or you may know, that we have started a program a couple of years ago called Helping Hands. And what that means is, instead of the Neighborhood Services going out and giving people fines or levying liens on their homes due to complaints from neighbors in the area because their lawns are bad, their houses need painting, and so forth. Now, a lot of these people are seniors, actually old ladies, the ones that we were helping, living alone, with no family, and just on their, you know, social security. So the staff went around and asked, you know, from the complaints that had been received against these homeowners, and talked to the homeowners, and got their willing to cooperate in the fact that we would go out there, meaning not, well, I did go, but get people to go out there and help to do what was necessary to fix up their lawns, help paint their homes, and put in new gardens and so forth. And it was amazing. I went to Fidugel Park. It was open, it started at seven in the morning, and there were people there at seven in the morning. And then I, my turn, my part of it, was to go at 12:30. As I got there, there was a program going on, and it was from a group from outside the city, from L.A., from what I understood, and there were hundreds of people there who were volunteers to go out to these homes. Now, you know, it was really hot on Saturday, and I'm not good in the heat anymore, and these people were out there digging in the sunshine, digging up the dirt, lugging the stones and rocks. The homes that they chose were quite large homes, two of them on Ethel, one of them on Sierra Vista, and one of them on Paloma, in nice areas, but people had lived in them fifty years, you know, and the last few years hadn't been able to care for them. You should have seen those volunteers. I'm telling you, it was, you would have made your heart good. Now, the reason, I got to pass this along. The majority of them were, I will say, poor working people. A lot of the guys were landscape gardeners, not gardeners, period. They brought their trucks, their equipment, and their help from their business that they did. They were doing the digging, they were doing the lugging. They put in, this one lady has MS, and she couldn't get her wheelchair because her walk went like this and then dropped off to the sidewalk. They put in a new walk for her. There were guys up there painting the eaves. They painted the windows, and these homes were old with, you know, wooden frames, and they were scraping the windows and painting. I mean, it was really something to see. Hundreds of them, not, and they were not all from Glendale, these volunteers. They were from outside. As a matter of fact, Joe Mandoki broke down in tears at one point because of the giving of these people who work all week long at hard jobs and then went out and helped these people. They didn't even know from a hole in the ground to fix up their homes and to help the neighborhood. And, you know, this is what, you know, Glendale is about. I wish you guys could have come and seen it. You really would have done your heart's good, it really would have, to see these people giving their time and their assets that they had to help these ladies.
All right, Margaret, I do have to ask you.
Thank you, I know, I know, but I do have to tell you about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Vahan Aladri? Aladri? Aladri, Aladri, sorry, followed by Stephen Gaiagos. I'm getting there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff. My name is Vahan Aladri. I'm a member of Glendale community, living here for twenty years. I'm here because I have started working as the business director for Luna Theater, and I've been involved with the theater for the last three and a half years, and I really appreciate the help the city has given to us with the bathroom permits and so on. Right now, we have a lease to sign starting February 2nd, and we have shortage in money. We have put in about $200,000 for the last three and a half years. I don't think, in comparison to the size of project that we have, if you compare it to the other projects the city has done, we have spent much more money than any project that City of Glendale has done for the last three years, square footage-wise. And if you don't, then we have to vacate the place. The Glendale itself has three theaters. We have about ninety theaters in Los Angeles, and the way it works is basically you have to provide space for small theaters because you get critics from L.A. Weekly or L.A. Times and different kind of venues. If you don't, then basically those theaters don't function. The, we have like large theaters also in the area, which they get a lot of fundings from big community donors or from the city or the state or federal. But the way it works in L.A. County is we have small theaters that work on a small budget, and a lot of them, they get a lot of philanthropic and also city help to be able to survive. And we have to have six, at least, shows go to be able to get critics. Sometimes we have full house, sometimes we have like one or two people. We have to do it, and it's all cost, and Noise Within basically is one, which is tremendous amount of work in the city, and I don't know whether they're going to leave the city, but for the health and wellness of the city, we need a theater company. And Luna Theater has put on the map, on the map, the city of Glendale for the last three and a half years. We have people who come from La Crescent, we have, I mean, from Valencia, we have artists who came from Paris, we have artists who came from London, we have artistic presentation in different multi-language. So what we are asking here is basically, we are in front of a $30,000 shortage, that we are not asking for the whole thing, we're asking for part of it, and we are trying to basically go to the small businesses. And one actually solar company just gave us $2,000 check on a small foundation that we had. And let me give you another thing, this whole, even city council is a theater. Our life is theater, universe is a theater. We all play different roles. Some of us are grouchy, some of us are not happy, some of us, you know, get lives difficult, but it's all, the whole universe is theater. God created this theater for all of us. Some of us enjoy it, some of us don't enjoy it, but some of us, like the people at Luna Theater, have really put their money where their mouth is. So I'm trying to say that it is necessary for city. We have about, another thing I like to bring your attention, we have about six million piano players or, I'm sorry, classical artists in the United States, little kids. China has thirty-six million. We have the best conservatories in the world, but forty percent of those kids are Chinese kids in the United States. There are very few American kids, American-born kids, who are involved in any kind of serious artistic work. We are not only financially becoming bankrupt, but we're also becoming bankrupt culturally. So it is the city's responsibility to be able to provide venues for artistic presentation because what it does is also, it decreases the heat. In times of difficulty, people will get together, watch theater, and enjoy it. At one time, every American remembers there were radio theater, and it really adds value to our American community. So we're not asking to, you ask to save us. We can do it. It would be very tough for us, but we have to sign this lease, and we need the city's help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Aladri. Stephen Gaiagos, followed by Mike Mohell.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of the Glendale City Council. My name is Stephen Gaiagos. I'm the Smoke Free Advocacy and Programs Manager for the American Lung Association of California. And last Tuesday afternoon, we had a press conference where we released an assessment of all eighty-eight cities in Los Angeles County based on the smoke-free protections that they offer their citizens in the form of a report card. I am proud to announce that Glendale is the only city in the state of California that got an A grade. I'd also like to, I brought with me tonight the report card for the top ten cities in Los Angeles County, and this makes up approximately 55.8% of the population of eleven million people in Los Angeles County. in Los Angeles County, these top 10 cities. So, you can see where these, where these cities fall in the protections that they offer, offer their citizens. And we had last year, Glendale got a C grade, but because of the courage of this council and the comprehensive ordinance that you passed, that catapulted Glendale from an C to an A. Cities, last year, when we did our report card, there was weighting, 60% was on clean outdoor air, 20% was on multi-unit housing, and 20% was on tobacco retail licensing. Because Glendale's ordinance has two As in one in retail licensing, one in clean outdoor air, and a B in multi-unit housing that allowed, because we reweighted it 33 and 1/3% each for all those three categories, Glendale gets an A. But the cities last year that got an A, being Burbank, Calabasas, and Baldwin Park, their, most of their ordinances are in clean indoor air, which last year composed 60%, and this year was 33 and 1/3. So, they dropped from an A grade to a B grade. So, I just wanted to come and say thank you for the citizens of Los Angeles County and California because Glendale has set the mark for other cities to follow suit. Burbank, your neighbor's city, was not very happy with their grade going from an A to a B, but could understand the reweighting of the grade and why it was so important. But cities like Pasadena also followed your lead and voted to make their rose parade smoke-free. It was just not just clean outdoor air, but also their special events that they have in Pasadena. And they also, like Burbank, Calabasas, and Baldwin Park, Pasadena rose to a B, and also Santa Monica has a B. But they just passed a very comprehensive multi-unit housing ordinance, smoke-free ordinance, which is gonna bring them up to an A for next year. But anyway, I just wanted to come and bring this display to you, and just wanted to let you know that our, our press conference was very well-received, and we've actually, on the heels of that, received inquiries from seven cities that wanted to get the ordinance passed by Glendale so that they could implement similar policies. So, I just wanted to share that with you. Also, the other information that I'd like to share was that the City of Beverly Hills, after they implemented their smoke-free policy for smoke-free dining outdoors, smoke-free patios, hotels, and everything, where they had a very comprehensive clean outdoor air policy, a year after they did that, their city council asked for a, an assessment of how businesses were doing as a result of them passing this ordinance. And in all sectors of their economy, where they considered themselves an international city where a lot of people who come from around the world come to Beverly Hills and they smoke, they found that in all sectors of their economy, it grew. It grew by, I think, 5%. So, they realized more profits after passing this policy than they had ever realized before. And this was also during a writer's strike. So, I'm hoping that we'll be able to see the same results here in Glendale. In fact, I'm almost pretty sure that we will as a result of the passing of this ordinance. So, thank you very much for your time, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Gaiagos. Mike Mohill, followed by Herbert Milano.
Not yet, already. Wait a second. One, two, three. Good evening, the mayor go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilman. When I was here last week, I spoke about the fire department and the danger of that job, and how it was not listed as a, in the labor statistic, as a really a dangerous job. And I mentioned that I was a salesman, and that was listed as a very dangerous job. I also said that I was rear-ended about three times. Got my aches and pains from that. But when I came home that night, my wife says to me, "Mike," she says, "you forgot the most important thing that happened to you while you were a salesman for 27 years." I said, "What was that?" She, "You were stuck up, you were stuck up at gunpoint. They asked for your wallet and any alien jewelry you had." I said, "You're right, I forgot all about that, got old." Then, I remember, is that when I told my management of that stick-up, the first thing my boss said to me was, "Don't tell anybody in the company that you were stuck up." So, talking about having a dangerous job, please, firefighters? I don't think so. They don't hit the books. Which firefighters do have danger, are the ones who fight the forest fires. And they only get about $60,000 a year. In fact, I spoke with one of those firefighters recently at the gym. The fellow says, "We're talking about, why don't you join Glendale Fire Department? I understand they pay quite well." He says, "I know they do, like twice as much that I do, but I can't get on because it's a closed corporation there." I mean, we say, "What do you mean, closed corporation?" This is because relatives hire relatives, brothers and, brothers and sisters and fathers. Strangers hardly ever get on the Glendale Police Fire Department, probably even the Fire Police Department, too. So, that's a troubling statistic. Also, Mr. Mayor, why is it over the past 10 years, about 50% of all the firemen claim a disability when they retire? Why? And in some years, they claim 80% disability? That's outrageous. Why does fire and police employees get 90% commission, excuse me, 9% pension when they retire? Deputy Chief Steve Howard of the Glendale Fire Department was only 51 years of age when he retired, and he'll get about 90% of his salary, which is about $180,000 a year. And he's gonna live another 30 years at the actuary tables. That means he'll be getting $5 million by the time he retires. Why, Mr. Mayor? Why are we paying him that much money when we can get somebody else for cheaper? Why does most current and past firefighters, again, have relatives? Now, who's hiring? According to the Gun, to the LA Times, "There is hope in these difficult times with historic job losses and the economy frozen. Government managed to add 181,000 jobs to its payroll." Something never changes, does it, gentlemen? Little bit headline news, gardeners are feeling the pinch. They are the first ones right now who're losing their jobs, gardeners and maids. LA Times. Down at the docks, longshoremen are losing their jobs, too. No one's importing. The condo market in Glendale just took a dump. LA, the Glendale News Press. The condo over there on Broadway went from being a condo to being a rental. Not good. My favorite store, Circuit City, no moss, as they would say in Spanish, no more. And the Realty Group says 30% cut in LA office rates. They're hurting. City of Long Beach takes the airport and wanna make it private. People like Home Depot, their business is booming. Because you know why? Because all the unemployed are doing their own handyman jobs, they're not hiring the carpenter plumber, et cetera. Right, Mr. Yusefian, carpenter, how the contractors doing nowadays? Excuse me. City of San Diego, headline news. They cut down on the services at the skate park because they don't have money to pay for a person to supervise it. And the kids are happy because there's no big brother to bug them anymore. And the city's saving money. Headline news. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Herbert Milano, followed by Abraham Navasartian.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I've been asked to see if I could top this.
Mr. Milano just explained to me, why is it that firefighters have relatives?
That's true. I've, I don't know, it's all, it's all relative to me, so I've, I guess today was quite an inspirational day for, for most of us, and I, and I was glad to hear most of the City Council members. I acknowledge the words of Barack Obama today. It definitely is a momentous occasion. It allows us to, to look again at all the challenges that we have nationwide, and obviously with respect to the city's finances and the choices that you make. For many years, I have been proposing and advocating for open spaces for Southern Glendale. And I take every opportunity to bring that up to you because, especially today, when we looked at the Washington Mall, looked at a significant public space that is incredibly valuable and has tremendous amount of history. And that is what we lack in Glendale. We lack a significant open public space. The public spaces that had been planned back in the 1990s, they were truly open public spaces for civic purposes with the opportunities for us to expand on all types of opportunities, cultural especially. You know, there were going to be some links to commercial, but at the end of the day, most of those open spaces in the, in the Greater Downtown strategic plan were to provide something that Glendale lacks, a true large open public space. And today, we only have one large available open space, and that is in Central Park, adjacent to the Central Library. All of my efforts to try to persuade you before you ran for City Council four years ago, and two years ago as well, have given me verbal assurances that this council, these members here today, are attuned to the need of that great open space. But somehow, plans continue with regard to the building of an adult recreation center smack in the middle of the park, with driveways on the green space, with parking spaces on the green space, and with the loss opportunity of the last major, you know, three and a half acres of open space in Central Glendale. The, there are funds that are coming from the county due to one of the bond measures that we have many, many years ago. And I checked with the county, and they're willing to postpone even further if you saw request, the issuance of that. In other words, you don't lose the money, and you're, and the money will become available for you if you choose to postpone that particular development. So, now we have a particular opportunity. You have a situation where you are looking at postponing capital expenditures. We have a plan right now that takes up the green open spaces, and I figured, why not tie those two together and basically postpone this particular plan, this particular capital expenditure, and think again as to the significant opportunity we still have to preserve the open space. We've had significant number of advocates come here to advocate for their open space in their area of town, specifically in the north. I've stated many times the disparity that we have with regard to open space. You know, Glenox Canyon where Mr. Wilber lives is six acres, where you live, Mr. Yusefian, six acres per thousand. The acreage right here where we are is .013 acres per thousand, around 750 square feet per thousand people. My tenants complain to me all the time that they are tired of the children playing in the front lawn because there is no park and open space for these children. And here, just a few blocks away, we have three and a half potential acres that we could use for children, for youth, for artistic venues, as a true civic open space. And so, as you begin to receive the bids on this particular project, it is my suggestion that you look again at the opportunity of preserving the open space because it is in your plans, and it was in your land use element, and your recreational element, and your Blue Ribbon Study Group, of which Mr. Quintero was a member, that this community needs a large open space. And I think we have an opportunity to tie in the cultural needs of the community, the green open space needs of the community, the high density that we have, and take advantage of that. And it is my hope that you move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Let's see, Abraham Navasartian, followed by Ashot Terevosian.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Daniel Abraham Navasartian. While I was watching the inauguration today, I was thinking, wow, the change is about to happen. It's, it's really happening right now. I was watching the thousands of people cheering and braving frigid temperatures just to get a glimpse of the man, the president, who's gonna be leading this change, President Barack Obama. It was amazing to see the power he had on so many thousands of people. And soon, the power he will have when he begins to implement this change and hopefully get this nation back on track. You five fine gentlemen have great power as well. I believe that power is not how many people you affect, but how big of an effect you have on the people whose lives you are able to touch. You five have great power. For thousands of Glendaleans, you five are who we look to when we need positive change. I think you know this, I hope you know this, it's a very important job. I mean, Glendale citizens come in and speak to you with the same hopes for change that lobbyists who fly thousands of miles speak to congressmen and other big decision-makers. And then those guys go and try to get their voices heard in larger settings to even more big-time people, better, bigger decision-makers. The reason I bring this up is, how much positive change can come about? If all these issues were being discussed in three- and five-minute segments with little or no feedback, no advice, not even any questions, for the most part, what would happen then? How would President Obama begin to make these changes if he didn't fully listen to the concerns of Congress and the House, and us Glendale citizens for that matter? I often wonder if you realize why Glendale citizens come and to speak? Why, why do they come in? They come because I believe they think that you do have that power. You do have the power to make changes. Otherwise, what are we doing here? During the Glendale redevelopment meeting earlier today, Mr. Herbert Milano made a good point. He suggested adding a small comment section to the minutes next to the names of people coming to speak, a brief description of what the main issue was they came to talk about. This could end up showing a trend in issues of problems beginning to develop and help us ward them off before they're beyond control. It could also bring attention to what the major issues are affecting our lives and serve as a record when projects like the Americana really are negatively affecting the businesses on Brand Boulevard and other small businesses in the vicinity for that matter. But this isn't even the point. The point is, what was the council's response to Mr. Milano's suggestion? Mr. Njerian said, "In defense of the agency, we have a program that we are continuing to work on with our fire chief. Maybe we can get a DVD for Mr. Milano to watch at home, being that he lives out of the area." Why would you say that? What does, what does that have to do with the real issue Mr. Milano brought up, which is that the Brand Boulevard businesses are having certain issues that need to be addressed? Mr. Njerian, you let me down on that one, really. The citizens that are offered three to five minutes to speak on an issue dear to their hearts are not coming in to criticize you specifically, as a group or an agency for that matter. They're coming in, I believe, because they really do think that if you listen to them and you can fully understand them, then positive changes can occur. And in this room, you five gentlemen have the power. You guys are like He-Man. It's so disheartening, though, when a Glendale citizen like Ms. Rita Unikian comes in week after week, and is forced to come in week after week before an issue affecting thousands of Glendaleans will even be considered for placement on the agenda. And when it's brought up, is there even a motion to put it on the agenda? No, of course not. When you, when Ms. Unikian originally brought up the issue of starting a petition regarding the rent control, do you, gentlemen, remember your response? Let's just say it was utterly beautiful watching you need to consult your on-guard attorney about whether a certain number of thousands of petition signatures meant that the rent control issue must now be placed on the ballot. Any process that deters open and free communication is deterring true democracy. In a city as small as Glendale, a couple of citizens getting deterred from coming in to speak can have a hu- to speak can have a huge impact on what issues are really being heard by you. It can totally skew your viewpoint and narrow your perspective. I guess that's my time, but I'm just going to leave with this. I don't know if you remember, Mr. Draymond, but there was a day when you two were just average Glendalean. I fondly remember when you came up to speak about an issue regarding Montrose businesses. Not only did Mr. Yusefian grant you the privilege of continuing to speak past the five minute mark, but he encouraged it. He followed up with both questions and insightful comments. He made you feel listened to. I think Mr. Najarian chimed in around minute eight. For the record, I believe you held the floor for nine and a half minutes that day. I ask, when is the last time you granted the same nine and a half minute privilege to a concerned citizen like Ms. Rita Unikian? Thank you.
Stick around, I'll answer your questions. Mr. Yusefian.
Mayor, I would like to have the gentleman come back for a second. I think you spoke about five and a half minutes and very eloquent in your speech. Nevertheless, I would like to ask, what was the purpose of you coming to city council chambers? What is it that we can do? I don't think we're all He-Mans. What is it that you want us to do for you? I mean, I heard all of the stuff, but I did not hear the section that you said, "What can I do for you?"
Okay, that's a very good question, Mr. Yusefian. Thank you for asking.
And I'm not going to deviate from our policy, which is that we will get through the speakers and then we'll have our questions and answers, which is what we do every Tuesday.
So I can't answer his question?
You can, but you have to wait for the process. In other words, we ask you to give courtesy to the other speakers so that they can also speak this evening. And then if Mr. Yusefian or anyone else wants to talk to you or ask you questions, they can. Mr. Tadavosian is next, followed by John McMahon.
Good evening. My name is Ashok Tadavosian. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I've been a volunteer participant at Luna Playhouse for the last year and a patron of it since its inception three years ago. I'm sorry for my crack voice, I have a cold, but I hope my presence here while I'm sick will serve as a strong testament to my and our commitments to the survival of Luna Playhouse in continuing its multicultural programming, bringing in diverse populations from different cities. And I hope that you will truly consider the possibility of assisting the survival and continuity of Luna Playhouse. Also, just really briefly, Luna Playhouse is in one of the less developed sections of Glendale, and I thought that might be of interest to the redevelopment agency. And not to be too repetitive, but once Noise Within leaves and if Luna Playhouse closes, there will be one, only one active playhouse left in Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tadavosian. John McMahon, followed by Nancy Kent.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city staff, city manager staff, city attorney staff, et cetera. My name is John McMahon, and I'm not here today to talk about the wireless ordinance because I know Mr. Howard's staff is active working on it. But I'm here on a related issue, which is about a permitting issue. So before I say that, I just want to say, because I've been getting my education in local government the last three and a half months with you guys, I think, I guess, this is just a general comment, there's no point, I guess, where it's appropriate to clap. But I realize people come up here and they have complaints, but there's also, every week that I come, there's something great happening about Glendale that makes me glad that I located my family here, whether it's Glendale Memorial Hospital a couple weeks ago, the smoking ordinance. So I think that, I don't know what the appropriate time is to talk about positive things, but it should be part of what we do here. Getting to my issue, as you guys know, our local group, our local cell tower crazies, our group, which you've been kind enough to listen to, has copies of all the ordinance, all the application materials, the photography and everything that's submitted as part of the T-Mobile application specifically for the cell site on Cumberland Avenue. And one of the things we've noticed that's come to our attention when looking at this is that there is inconsistencies among the permit. Specifically, and on a construction permit, this matters, the location of construction on a construction permit is actually a critical element. The location is listed as 509 Cumberland on one, 509 and a half on another, and 509 and a quarter Cumberland on another one. And from what I understand from some of my other colleagues in the group that are in, you know, the Housing Authority and the redevelopment, historic homes in that area, that know a lot more than I do, first of all, for a fact, in accordance to the Glendale zoning code, the director of Public Works has the right to deny a permit. And apparently, there is, the rejection of the permit for material error is something that has a history in Glendale. And like I said, the actual location, the lack of clarity and inconsistency about the location of construction is a material element. So I'm here today actually requesting that the permit be denied for the existing one. I know that it's, that the whole thing is in abeyance, but also, we've also been told, Mr. Howard's staff, that during this period of the moratorium, T-Mobile or any other cell carrier is allowed to keep submitting applications and everything is sort of held in abeyance. This specific application is inaccurate, it's inconsistent, and should be denied immediately based on that. And I'd like someone to maybe look into that. And if that's true, and we have a history of doing that in Glendale, it should be done for this application. I also like to say that it should be noted that the T-Mobile representative, Clark Harris, who came here, I think it was last week, and spoke, has said in the Glendale news press, I'm going to read his quote, "We are no longer married to this physical location." So according to that, this denial should also not put an undue burden upon T-Mobile and Synergy, their contractors, since they're no longer attached to this location. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. Okay, Nancy Kent.
Nancy Kent, resident and homeowner in southeast Glendale. A couple of weeks ago, I came and expressed my concerns about all of South Glendale being declared a gang injunction area. And I do not have any plans to sell my home, but I feel that being in a gang injunction area lowers my property values. That evening, I was, and the person sitting next to me, were surprised by the response that was given to my comments, that the gang injunction is not talking about an area, it's talking about people. The press release from the Police Department of the City of Glendale has a link to the two maps for the two areas. And map number one indeed shows an area that includes all of South, all of Glendale south of Broadway, except for some reason, three streets, the portions of Acacia, Windsor, and Garfield that are east of Verdugo. I would just like to make one request about the gang injunction area. Does it sunset so that it can be revisited in a few years and we can see if we still need this or whatever? And if it's not already set up to sunset, could it be set up to sunset in a certain number of years? Next point, new subject. I was very puzzled to hear someone at this microphone a little bit earlier in Oral Communications saying that the job of a firefighter is not a dangerous job. I absolutely do not understand the thinking that goes into a comment like that. I think firefighters are heroes in our society. And last point, thank you to Councilmember Najarian for your suggestion to change the roof line in the Maple Park building, and I hope that your suggestion manages to prevail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Okay, that was our last speaker for Oral Communications. Oral Communications is closed. Let me go to my colleagues to see who has comments or questions.
I have. I'll start with a question. Is the Luna Playhouse a nonprofit corporation, 501(c)(3) or whatever it is? And how many seats in the theater? Forty? Forty-two. Then on the idea of the material mistake on the permit or the application, I'm curious as to what your feelings are on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have no feelings about it. We'll have to look at the permit and if it continues to go for, well, as legal counsel, I'm going to have to look at the facts and the law and not on...
It does seem a little odd.
Thank you, Dr. Spock. Mr. Spock.
It does seem, it does seem a little, it does seem a little odd that they're using halves, quarters, I mean, it seems a little vague.
Whether or not that's considered to be quote-unquote "material" is something we can have to look at, among other things. But I'll have staff take a look at it with Public Works.
Okay. Then also on Burbank receiving their B, Pasadena their B, Glendale their A, I think that's a positive in the sense that we've got three cities that are similarly situated geographically, economically, even in terms of population, more or less. And we've all arrived at the same conclusion, that it makes sense to have clean air in our public spaces. I just thought that was kind of, kind of interesting. In terms of Luna Playhouse, I would like to see us investigate to see what we can do in terms of providing some help for a nonprofit that has been around for many years and continues to function, providing what I think's a civic plus. Let's see what we can do about it to, I don't know, who parts in rec or what we can do. I think it's worth trying to keep the organization going.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najarian.
I have several of the speakers that I'd like to respond to, but first with Luna Playhouse. If staff could, and I promised Mr. Paria, and I would be giving him this information earlier, but I didn't get it, I've been digging through my BlackBerry. But the number to the Di Pietro brothers, Noise Within is leaving sometime in the future. There may be some opportunity, some common ground that Luna may have with the Di Pietros for the Sonic Temple Building. I'd also like to encourage Luna, if they haven't done so, I hope it's not too late, to apply for CDBG funding, which is coming in the next month or two. They're not eligible. There could have been some creative applications written to that regard, but that's, it's not for me to say. With regard to Nancy, thank you for supporting the idea. As far as the gang injunction goes, I think the real thing we're trying to do is to use that tool, which is a very special tool, to help rid the area of crime and get rid of these gangs and force them out of L.A. So hopefully that we will be able to not just sunset it, but have no need to, for it to be relevant and applicable to our neighborhoods. I know it is a very powerful tool. I know being concerned with civil rights, it sort of pushes the envelope to civil rights, but it has been, has been found to be constitutional. With regard to the gentleman who was upset that I addressed Mr. Milano with regard to the DVD, he had two issues, two issues he had. One was, he wanted special notation made next to the speakers who spoke at Oral Communications. That was his first point. My response to that is that these entire proceedings are videotaped, they're replayed within the city, and they're available to the entire world on the worldwide web on our city website. But he made another issue. He made another point, and that point was that the redevelopment agency should promote a shopping Glendale plan or shopping Glendale promotion. My response to Mr. Milano, I mean, I hope it didn't seem like a flippant response, but Mr. Milano does not live in Glendale. So that was my response, exactly. Why does it matter? Because our public service announcements to shopping Glendale, many of them were held on Channel GTV6 and our local cable carrier charter. So the point being that being, living outside of Glendale, he obviously would not have the ability to watch Glendale TV. Ergo, my request to provide him with a DVD so he is kept abreast of the efforts that we have taken in the past and we will be taking to promote shopping in Glendale. No harm intended. I think my comments with Mr. Milano, to Mr. Milano, have been much more civil than the cruel personal attacks he's made on me in certain publications, such as The Vanguard's, attacking personal disabilities I may have, attacking my name, ridiculing my name, are James Najarian. So I do try and respect all the speakers and try and give them positive input, and I thought my response to Mr. Milano was positive. But while we're on the topic of Mr. Milano, one thing that he did say, which led me to be a little bit cautious, is the fact that he is contacting the County of Los Angeles to determine the status of some of our grant funding. And the issue with that, for those who don't know, is Mr. Milano has been an adversary to the city, in fact filed a lawsuit against the city on this particular issue. So it does concern me where we have an adversary relationship, he is contacting a third party. I don't know what Mr. Milano is telling them. He might be saying, oh, those guys are never going to build that park, can't you delay it? You know, it's certainly a legitimate question that we need to ask, and I'm not sure a cease and desist is in order. I hope he's not doing anything to scuttle the plans or the funding. The last question I have is Mr. Avignon. I was under the impression that if you had any employees of a bar, that you could not have smoking in there. So, well, let me state my point first, and that's that, so if you were able to smoke from 1998 till recently, when we passed this no smoking ordinance, clearly it's an impact, a sudden impact to your business, but I wasn't really, I was under the impression that if you had any employees of any number, aside from being owned or operated, that you weren't allowed to have any smoking. So I don't know, I don't know if that's something you're ready to respond to, but just a point I wanted to raise.
I'm ready to respond anytime to a number of questions and concerns.
If the mayor's discretion, if he wants it now or later.
Let's go forward.
On that particular issue, Mr. Mayor, members of council, your recollection is correct. In fact, prior to 1998, under Labor Code Section 6404.5, an individual at a bar or tavern with, or, or with five or fewer employers could still permit smoking, notwithstanding AB 13. However, as of January 1, 1998, the legislation was very clear that you could no longer allow smoking in bars or taverns or where you had a location with five or fewer employees. There's an Attorney General's opinion that was published October 8, 1999, directly on point. There's also a Legislative Council opinion that I have dated December 20, 1997, where they were looking at the expiration of the two exemptions on January 1, 1998, and pointing it out, and pointing out that any information or advice that was previously given that smoking would be permitted in bars and taverns was actually incorrect, that effective January 1, 1998, that would no longer be permitted. And so technically, what I'm hearing is that somebody potentially has been violating state law for a significant period of time. That stated, notwithstanding all that, this council knows the ordinance they've adopted is not preempted by state law, and that also prohibits smoking in bars and taverns, regardless of the number of employees. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my first question was answered by Mr. Howard. Maybe Mr. Howard can provide that document to...
Be happy to give.
To the gentleman, so he knows what the rules are.
Copies of the opinions.
We're not just making this stuff up.
Be happy to do that.
Okay. The other question is, has to do with the gang injunction. I think Nancy brought up the issue that is this something that you have to disclose if you, you are selling real estate? You know, my wife is a real estate agent, so I went to her and I asked her to go and check with her broker, and lo and behold, Nancy was right. It's a disclosable item. You have to disclose that your house is in a gang injunction area. So for your information, Board of Realtors also has verified that. I don't know what that means. I really have no clue, but she was asking me, and she asked at the council, so I checked into it, and that's what it is. And the second question that she also asked that I need to find out from you, since you were the one who filed it, is there a sunset to that? Or is this good for perpetuity?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Yusefian, I wouldn't refer to it as a sunset clause. When we request the injunction and, and hopefully the court will grant it, it's for a period of three years, as long as five years, but there is a period of time where that injunction would be in effect. And let's, following up on Councilmember Najarian's point, this is technically not a gang injunction area. For purposes of real estate disclosure, it may be disclosed as that, but the defendants in the gang injunction are individual gang members. This injunction applies to them and controls their activities within a geographic boundary. So they cannot engage in certain activities within these geographic areas, and if they're found to be engaging in those activities, they will be in violation of a court order. So the reason you have a geographic area so you can define the locations where these individuals are not permitted to engage in certain activities, but the injunction will be against individuals operating within the area.
Okay. So have we gotten it already?
We have not received, we have a hearing date coming up. I believe it's early next month, but I have to check.
Okay. On the issue of Luna Playhouse, Mr. Mayor, I know this is oral communication. We cannot make a decision. We cannot say yes or no to their issues. So I would like, if there is an interest on behalf of another council member, I would like to agenda this item to see what is it that legally we can actually do, what our remedies are.
I'm happy to place that on the agenda.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And at this point, I would like to ask the gentleman to come, and please, very quickly, in a short burst, let me know what were you here for, besides seeing all us He-Man?
I came here because there seems like there's a big focus on limiting the amount of free speech and the free exchange of ideas and opinions in this council chamber. Since Mr. Draymond has come on, it seems that that's been one of his main goals, to limit the amount of people in this audience. I see here it's 9:15. You know, that means that all the other people who came here in suits with presentations didn't want to stay this long. That means it's kind of hard to stay this long. So basically, the question is, why is Oral Communications put at the end when you know for a fact that's gonna limit the amount of free speech and free exchange of ideas? That's why I'm here. And I'm here because you council members, for some reason or another, sat by and let it happen. It's wrong, and everyone knows it's wrong. And Mr. Najarian, I know that a lot of meaner things have been said here, but the point is, this is what I saw today. This is actually what inspired me to come, because instead of focusing on Mr. Milano's point, you focus on something totally irrelevant. I don't care if he lives in China. I care that he cares about Glendale. And that's all, that's good enough for me. He's, he's told me more about what's going on in the city, and other public speakers have told me more about what's going on in the city than the discussion that you gentlemen have, honestly. That's how I found out about stuff going on.
City of Glendale.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, and thank you for staying this long.
Thank you for having me.
I, you know, I mean, I would let our, our mayor answer, but, but let me take a crack at this. It is only, it's not even 9:30, and generally, the mayor has the discretion to change the times. When I was mayor, I did it occasionally. When I had too many people who wanted to speak on a specific item, I would change the oral communication time. I think for so long as Mr. Draymond has run the meeting, with exception of, I think, maybe less than a handful, less than a handful of meetings, most of the times, we get into oral communication around 8 o'clock, which is not a time that I would consider to be out of the realm. Once in a blue moon, we get into 10, 11 o'clock, but most of the time, we get into the 8 o'clock. So, and as much as some people think that we just are hoping to just scare people away, I could tell you the number of cards, as you could see, is a nice big stack, and I was concerned, just like you, in the beginning. I waited, I watched, I counted the number of people who came before we went into this process and after. And you know what? The numbers hasn't changed, really. So it's the same number of people. If it's a burning issue for them, they come. You lose some of the audience. Most of the audience that are not here are mostly staff people or people who actually have business that they care about doing as part of the agenda. After that's done, they're gone. But most people who are interested in telling us what their issue is, they stick around, they tell us their issue, we take some action. And as, as your eloquent squeech, I have to say one thing. We don't have power. The power belongs to the people who is on a loan to us, and we use it to help the community. So, so think of it that way, and I don't want you to think, I don't know who you are, I've never met you before. Nevertheless, I just wanna say, thank you for coming. We take our lumps here. We all take our lumps here. None of us are the one who gets to wear the, the little halo on top and nobody touches. Every one of us have been beaten up a few times, and we got enough lumps. But nevertheless, we love the city. We come in here and we try to honestly solve people's problems for as much as we can. Sometimes we're successful, sometimes we're not, but it's not that we don't try. We really do try, and we're not trying to silence the public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor. You're not the eloquent, what was the second word?
Speaker.
Oh, I misheard. I, I didn't understand.
My, my mouth was going dry, so that's why.
Squeak.
Didn't quite come up. Sorry. I meant eloquent speaker.
Well, Mr. Yusefian, on the issue of Oral Communications, it's not just that the numbers haven't changed, it's the exact same people as before.
But few new faces.
Few new faces. But just, just for, to give the benefit of the doubt, because I wanna assume that, that this is not an agenda, it's a considered opinion and asking for a response, there is a reason for this. There's a reason that I made this change. And I think there's a reason that you haven't heard from my colleagues on it. The reason is a balancing of interests. Before, we would take a lot of time at the front for Oral Communications, still the same number of people, as we hear from now. The difference is that Oral Communications is a, a part of this agenda where people from the public can come any Tuesday, every Tuesday, Tuesday after Tuesday, if they wish, to discuss any issue that's not on the agenda. And they do. The difference with agendized items is that those people are generally people, other citizens, who, once in their lifetime, perhaps, they're going to come interact with their local government. And I believe for those people who can't come on another night to speak on a, on an agendized item, who are here for specific business that affects them, that they should be accorded the, the equal time to be able to be upfront and heard their, have their issues heard, when A, the staff is not brain-dead, who is giving us input on an issue, when their council is not brain-dead because it's 11 o'clock at night on an issue that's gonna be the only time they're ever gonna interact with their city government. So that, that is part of the, the balancing of interests here. You may think it has to do with something else, but that's what I said at the time, and that's still how I feel now. The other thing is, the meetings aren't running any, frankly, they are running shorter, but they're not running any longer, certainly than they were with my predecessor, Mr. Najarian. He split Oral Communications and heard part upfront and part at the end, and the part at the end was not being heard any earlier than it is now, and it, and it's certainly not running any later. In fact, it is running earlier, shorter than it was then. I would also make just an editorial comment on my own, which is that sometimes we hear from people who come forward, who point to an empty chamber and say, see you, council, or you, Mr. Draymond, you're doing this. You've caused this empty chamber. You speak about it as though it's a fact. It's not a fact. It's your opinion, just as this is my opinion, what I'm about to say. Sometimes the reason there's an empty chamber, when the same people come forward and say the same things, is because they don't represent a majority view. They represent an isolated view or, or a, a view that has a limited, has limited support. We hear people that come here that talk about any number of issues, but it doesn't mean that they're representing a majority view, and that's the primary reason you don't see a full chamber. Now, on the other hand, when something, an issue comes up, someone wants to speak about, and it is of, of general broad appeal, then you see a full chamber. Mr. McMahon is a perfect example of that. He spoke here tonight. If you had been here the other night, you would have seen a packed chamber that was here to talk about issues, and at that time, oral, under Oral Communications, that agreed with them. I also wanna answer your question about allowing people to speak beyond their time. I do that often. In fact, I do that more often than I've seen my colleagues do. Now, by the way, I didn't just start coming to speak at city council a couple of years ago. I started coming here as a child to observe, because my father just felt it was important for me to come, but also I started advocating in the city in 1975. And from the early 80s on, I've been in this council chamber. The instance you're talking about, which I believe you're correct, when Mr. Yusefian was mayor and asked me to go on, I was not speaking as a citizen here, just a citizen. I was speaking as the elected representative, the president of an organization which has a contract with the city of Glendale, and I was speaking in an advisory capacity, which is part of that contract. Had to do with the shopping park. You mentioned that, the mantra, "shopping park." And I believe that's why Mr. Yusefian was asking questions about that issue. I've also been here to speak when Mr. Quintero was mayor in 2003. I've been here to speak when Mr. Weaver was mayor on a couple of occasions. In fact, the only time I haven't been here to advocate on that side was when Mr. Najarian was mayor, because that was last year and I was already on the council. Mr. Yusefian asked me to, for some clarifications and points. Mr. Weaver cut me off. Go figure. It just depends. So, some of the people, to answer your question directly, that I have allowed to go on and taken some lumps from various people for letting them go on, Hozmic Demergin, who had the issue of the candlesticks upon Linda Vista. I gave her and her husband, and I think her brother or her husband's brother, extra time. I was roundly criticized for doing that in certain circles. John McMahon, he came with his group the other night to speak. I gave them a block of 35 minutes to speak. In fact, the, the city clerk turned to me and said, 35 minutes? I mean, not, it was sort of sorovochi, sorovocha. He, he didn't say it out loud, but he mouthed those words to me. Mr. Weaver turned to me and said, you're giving him 35 minutes? Bruce Philpott, when we were doing our budget study session, I gave him, what was it, a half hour or 20 minutes? 20 minutes to speak so that he wouldn't be giving us his presentation in little bits and pieces in a way that we couldn't really comprehend it. And I was criticized for that. I can't remember her first name, but Mrs. Moessesian, who comes occasionally, she's an elderly lady who has, who doesn't speak English well, and she usually speaks in Armenian about issues related to her apartment. She's been here many, many times. I do let her go on because there's, there are language, language issues, and because, I will admit to you, I have a particular issue about giving seniors a little more time. And I've also met with her privately. Every person up here who's been mayor has dealt with her. I also stopped the, the, the room from catcalling her the last time, because they're tired of hearing her, but we aren't. That's our job, just as you point out. When, when Eddie Goustian was here, related to his property and his property rights, we, I gave him extra time. You mentioned Rita Unikian. Rita Unikian, and you mentioned the fact that all we did was turn to the city attorney and say, how many, how many signatures does she need? What, what you didn't point out, or maybe you don't remember, is that when she came here, for the first umpteen time she was here, her question was not, will you put rent control on the agenda? It was, how do I put rent control on the ballot? That's what she wanted to know. I met with her no less than five times privately, and I also did so with, on one of those occasions, with somebody who could translate. Mr. Kasakian met with her. Mr. Yusefian met with her. Mr. Weaver met with her. A number of people did to try to help her. That's why we turned to the city attorney and said, how many signatures? Because she wanted to know what she needed to do to place it on the ballot. Anyway, that's, that's some of the answers to your, to your questions. And again, I take you at face value. I appreciate the fact that you, you've come here. By the way, I still view myself as a pretty average citizen. You know, I, I don't make a lot of money. In fact, my business has suffered tremendously from being here, and...
Welcome to the club.
As Mr. Yusefian just said, welcome to the club. So, anyway, we sit here, we get kicked in the pants when we step out of line, and we should be. We're, we're supposed to come here with broad shoulders, and we're supposed to listen, and I think we do. We also have to keep an eye on, on the meeting moving along. I know I may not have answered it to your liking, but those are my reasons anyway, and I do appreciate you coming.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to clarify regarding Luna Playhouse in terms of an agenda item. I heard from Councilmember Quintero that he wanted to, he wanted staff to investigate what we can possibly do to help Luna Playhouse, and Councilmember Yusefian bring up the idea of placing it on the agenda. Just clarification in terms of what council's thought is as, as a whole. A staff report. What would you like?
Well, as I understood Mr. Yusefian's request, he would like some debate on DIAS about what our options are, or a report that comes back with whatever options there are so that we can actually discuss it, so it'll be agendized, so that we can discuss it openly.
We will have staff look at it, Mr. Mayor, and we'll have something too within, within the month, I would assume, in terms of some options.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Beers. Any other comments? No. Okay. I think that is our, do we have any new business?
No. We're adjourned.
Okay, we are adjourned.